Graham's gonna do the invocation followed by the pledge by Mr. Landry.
Let's pray. Father God, just come to you tonight, just giving you praise and glory, Father, for who you are, just saying that we love you, Father. Just ask this special blessing upon this meeting tonight, Father. Just ask that you give us wisdom and discernment tonight, Father, to make the decisions that please you ultimately, Father. We, I just ask a blessing and a hedge of protection, Father, around the soldiers in Fort Hood today. Don't exactly know the details, Father, but I just pray that you are all over that, Father, and just protect those and be with those families that have lost loved ones, Father. Again, we thank you and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Face your flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Andropant?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Fornum?
Here.
Mrs. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Hassan?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Present.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Spell?
Here.
Mr. Stelly? Mr. Seis?
President.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
President McMillan?
Here. Mr. Stelly did call. He is on his way. He'll be here shortly. If you have a cell phone or pager, we'd ask that you put it to silence at this time, please. If you'd like to speak on any item on the agenda, if you'd fill out a blue card back and bring it up to the front, up to the front desk here, we'll make sure that you have that opportunity to speak on that item on the agenda. Item five is gonna be a six o'clock action, a public hearing, on some condemnation, so we're gonna move to item six. Item six is presentation of proclamation to Mr. Jerry Watley on November 6th, on November 2nd, as Jerry Watley Day Calcasieu Parish in recognition of his 36 years of faithful service as Extension Field Agent with the LSU Agriculture Center. I'm gonna, Jerry, if you'll meet me right up here at the microphone. I have a proclamation to read to this jury on behalf of this jury. Of course, all of y'all know Jerry and all the great things Jerry's done for Calcasieu Parish. I wanna say, earlier this week, I did have an opportunity as this jury to give another proclamation, and it was a woman that I, pretty much most of my life, always thought was my girlfriend. So Jerry, you're the second-best proclamation this week. I did have a chance to give a proclamation to Ellie Mae Clampett, Ms. Donna Douglas, on behalf of this jury, and what a great moment that was. You can't hardly compete with Ellie Mae. But one thing I know about Jerry, and Jerry's done this for a number of years, he's also a fellow auctioneer, and Jerry has raised probably hundreds of thousands of dollars for different charities and events throughout southwest Louisiana. He's always been a guy that's been there for us whenever we needed Jerry to do about anything. Of course, we're gonna miss him out at LSU Ag. I'm gonna give the jury a couple of chances to maybe say a couple Jerry Watley stories as we come up there. One of the things, as soon as we had this Albania problem, I called Jerry and he said, "I'm retired." So with that being said, I'm gonna read this proclamation. It's, "Whereas Mr. Jerry Watley has faithfully served the people of Louisiana as Extension Field Agent with LSU Agricultural Center for 36 years, whereas numerous consumers, including and not limited to rice, sugarcane farmers, cattle and swine, sheep producers, 4-H youth residential gardeners, have all benefited from the research-based information provided by Mr. Watley, and whereas Mr. Watley has provided approximately 39,360 hours of devoted attention to the 4-H group in Calcasieu Parish, and whereas Mr. Watley has worked with above and beyond the call of duty to secure early reentry of agricultural procedures into Calcasieu Parish immediately following Hurricane Rita and Ike, whereas Mr. Watley is a true public servant in the most honorable sense of the phrase, and has served with the utmost distinction during his career at the LSU Agricultural Center. Therefore, now it be proclaimed by the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury on this day, Monday, November 2nd, shall be hereafter known and remembered as Jerry Watley Day in the Parish of Calcasieu. Best wishes and appreciation and recognition hereby extended to Mr. Watley on behalf of the entire Police Jury. Signed by President McMillan and our Administrator Mark McMurray. Jerry, congratulations on a great career. We're gonna miss you, and we'd like you to say a few words.
Really, about a month ago, I told y'all thanks, and I wanna say it again. I wanna thank you for your support for our organization. We do have, offer the very best of information that research can provide, and we try to work with all citizens. I wanna encourage you too, because what you do makes a difference. I said it Monday night, y'all are a role model as far as I'm concerned about what government should be. Baton Rouge and Washington DC could benefit well by observing how y'all conduct business, because it translates into effective service to our community. And I know there's a fine line in governance about between having too much and too little, and I know that gets contentious at times, but you folks have a history of doing an excellent job of putting that into the right perspective. And I wanna just challenge you, just keep on staying the course. You know, the principle is you base your actions on. Serve us well as citizens. You've been fiscally conservative, but you've been compassionate with the citizens of our parish. You've been visionary, and yet you hadn't forgotten the past, and our citizens enjoy the fruits of your labor. Don't stop. You're just really good. And I look forward to being a John Q. Public and being able to work with y'all as a private citizen, and I do appreciate it. It's a great honor for me to have been able to work with this staff in all departments. They have been, I don't know how y'all keep them. I don't know how we keep them. I mean, from the Public Works to the Facilities Management, to the folks in Finance, every one of them, they're excellent. They know their business, and they take care of it well, and they've kept me out of jail, and I do appreciate that, 'cause I don't know all the rules and regs. So just have my utmost regards and thanks and respect for what you do. I'd be remiss, I do need to introduce one person. She makes me look good. That's my wife, Kathy Rochelle White. If for nothing else, it was worth coming to Calcasieu Parish from northeast Louisiana. If you don't know where I came from, ask Mark. He got a lesson the other night. But I got to meet my wife, and I'd have never met her, being from Lake Providence, 'cause she's from St. Martinville, and I'd never even been to St. Martinville, but it was worth that, to come down here and be able to work with y'all. So thanks very much, and I do appreciate it.
If you would, just a second. We probably have a couple jurors that'd like to make a couple of comments, and I can see Ms. Trimmie's on the ready over there, so I'll go to her first. Ms. Trimmie?
So you're a mind reader now?
Yes, ma'am.
Very buoyant. Thank you very much. Jerry, for all the years that you've been there, all the fourth graders that you've started with, and all the seniors that you ended with, all the thousands and thousands and thousands of young people that you've worked with, whether it was with the animals, or whether it was with, a lot of them just do writing. They write, it's like unbelievable, or art, or shooting sports, or all the things, horticulture, all the things that the young people learn through 4-H and through the LSU Ag Center. Goes with each one of them. And one of my special little friends, I mean, besides my children that are both in 4-H, and one's in the sixth grade now and one's in the sophomore, but then I have some other grandchildren that are already moving forward on this, because they want Mamu to get a pick. So I guess Mamu will have to get a pick. But what, my real point is, is young people like Claire Galley, and there's hundreds and hundreds of young people like Claire, who has been here to our podium before, has excelled in 4-H all of her life, who is now a student, studying now at Tulane University, and wants to be a doctor. And these young people, they got the basics of what they need from 4-H. They got the general attitude, if you work hard, you can reach whatever goals you wanna reach. And 4-H is the one that helps mentor that. Not just their teachers, this is one-on-one. This is going all over the state of Louisiana, whether it's to Shreveport or Alexandria, and meeting other kids that are in 4-H from all over the state and then all over the United States. The interaction that what you do helps each child that you've worked with. So I just, I don't wanna talk about me, I wanna talk about you, because you are such a class act and such an honorable man, and have the biggest heart that I've ever known. And I just wanna thank you for letting me be your friend, and we're gonna miss you, but I hope to see you on down the rodeo trail.
You will.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Any other jurors at this time? Mr. Watley, on behalf of the entire jury, we're thrilled for what you've done over the years, and we all appreciate you having the opportunity to retire. And I thought that was your daughter, Kathy. I didn't realize it was your wife, but we're glad to have her here with us.
You can see I've taken real good care of her. She hasn't changed a bit in 32 years, and I have changed a little.
On our, we'd like to just give you a round of applause and thank you very much. Item seven is the appearance of family and juvenile court judges in reference to their operations of the North Annex of the Parish Courthouse. And, you know, we do have the bond issue coming up. We did have an opportunity to go visit with the judges the other day. Some of the jurors, and Guy and Leland, if you'd come to the microphone and introduce yourselves, and maybe just tell us a little bit why you feel as it's very important that the folks of Calcasieu Parish vote yes on the bond issue, and the opportunity to have a new juvenile courthouse, and to work with you guys in building a better building for a better future of Calcasieu Parish. And Leland, just state your name and address for the record.
Land Katrera, P.O. Box 1150, Lake Charles, 70602.
Guy, we'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Judge Guy Bradbury with the 14th Judicial District Court Family and Juvenile Section, and my address is 1130, Post Office Box 1130, Lake Charles.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all for the opportunity to come and speak. I think we got here out of a day in family court, which you were all invited to, and many of you had the opportunity to spend with us, and some of y'all had the opportunity to spend with us about seven or eight years ago when we did it. And we also had media there and other public officials, and our efforts were twofold. One, to educate people on exactly what we do in family court and juvenile court. I think there's some preconceived notions by what certain articles appear in the paper, what people think goes on, but to really go and experience it and see what happens. And then, second of all, to educate everybody and show them the facilities that we're actually working under. And I wanna thank those who did come and the ones who had come before. And more importantly, we really wanna thank y'all for putting the whole issue on the bond, on the, on the, what would you call it?
Baccalaureate.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think people realize that what we do in family and juvenile court actually probably affects almost everybody in the parish. I think people know that we do the divorces and the custody and the child support, but people don't realize that we also handle a lot of other things. We handle all the juvenile cases, which by law are all confidential, and that's a very serious issue that's with our facilities, because we're not able to maintain and comply with the law. But we do delinquency, juvenile crime, fines, traffic, and child protection, children who are removed from the home for abuse and neglect. And we also do adoptions. We also do elderly protection when the elderly are abused by caregivers that has come into our court. So we truly touch just about everybody in the parish. Some way or other, one day, we do weddings and a little bit of everything. But on any given day in our court, what you'll see is victims who are victims of domestic violence, who are forced to sit just feet away from their abuser. You'll see victims of juvenile crime, who are forced to sit right next to the juvenile who committed the crime and harm them. You'll have juveniles who are in custody, they'll be wearing orange, and they'll have shackles on their wrists and on their legs, and they'll have to be paraded through the public, which violates all our laws. You also see children who've been abused, both mentally, physically, sexually, in the same room and within feet of the people who have abused them. You also see divorcing parents where the emotions are flying, when we're talking about issues of their money and their children, and they're forced to be in the same room together without adequate facilities, and the emotions just fly. And you also see the elevator repairmen there just about every day. We've had people stuck in the elevator for 30 minutes or longer. We've had to call ambulances in to get people who are in wheelchairs, because the elevators are frozen, and they can't get in the judge's elevator, it's too small. They can't get in the public elevator, 'cause it's stuck between floors, and they can't come down the staircase. So we've had to hire ambulances to get people out of our facilities just to leave. So we have serious problems, and when we, these people who are victims and are having hard times in their lives, are coming for us to be revictimized in our facilities. And to give you an example, we had the Fire Marshal who set forth our actual capacities in that building, and we didn't have that information when those of y'all visited, came, but we have it now. And according to the Fire Marshal, our capacity are as follows. We have two courtrooms. Our large courtroom is conceived, has a capacity for 80, which we exceed that on occasions. Our small courtroom is 50, which we exceed almost every time we have court in there. And our main lobby, which is supposed to house all the people who are coming into those two courtrooms, can have 40 people in it. We violate that every day. And what, the reason we can't do much to work around it is juvenile proceedings are all confidential, so people have to remain outside. Our total count for lobby space in that building, we can hold 57 people, given the three, one lobby upstairs and the waiting room on the second, and the little waiting room when you come through the metal detectors on the fourth. So the most we're supposed to have in the lobby area is 57. We have way over that every day. And our holding area, where we are to have the juveniles, can hold 15, which I'm sure there's been occasions we've exceeded that. We also have issues, 'cause we cannot have juvenile prisoners with adult prisoners, and so we have to wait till the juveniles are out before we can bring the adults up, or we have to put the adults in our conference room, which isn't really a holding facility, while they wait for the juvenile cases to finish. So the main problem right now, we also have in that lobby, and the reason a lot of these counts for capacity are so low, is that we only have two ways to get out of the building, and one of them, the Fire Marshal won't recognize as egress, because it's the staircase, and the staircase on every floor, the door's open into the staircase, which are also violation of building codes. So he only considers one egress space, and that's the one that goes outside, but when you get all the way down, then it's padlocked. So you would get out of the third floor, and you can get down, and then you're stuck. You can't get out. I don't know why it's padlocked, but. So we only have one egress if there's an emergency. We've been lucky so far that bomb scares and fire alarms and all that, to date, haven't really been a major issue, but, and we hadn't really had to get out there quick, but if we do, I think we're gonna have some serious problems. And we really wanted to tell you that all these issues, they're not about me or Guy. They don't relate to us. I mean, we're not asking for more space for our office or bigger bathrooms. They truly relate to those that we serve. I mean, these people come in, they need really emotional, hard issues solved, and we put them in horrible facilities in that the space and the capacity, they sit on top of each other, and many of y'all saw it. It's a disgrace. And so we're not asking anything for our staff, although we have staff that are working in storage closets, because we've outgrown even office space, but it's really about those that we serve, and trying to give them a place that they can get, that they're comfortable. We've worked, just so you'll know, the ones that are new, we have worked on this for years, and we've been very patient. We've worked with Mark. This goes back for years. We've looked at every other option so that the parish knows that and all the citizens know that. We have looked at other options. We've looked at the Montolula Light Building. We've looked at going on to the Judicial Center at the top or into it. We've looked at extending the building we're in. So the actual building of a new building is the best fiscal way, as well as truly not putting a Band-Aid on the problem and giving us the facilities that the citizens deserve. So we've tried everything, and we are truly grateful for y'all putting it before the voters and certainly for supporting it. We have been out there talking. We have made the decision, many of y'all are more like at public meetings, and what we've done is gone to all the agencies that come into our court, that truly are affected by it daily. We've been to OCS and OYD and OJJ and Child Support Enforcement, the Woman Shelter. All those people that come into court and are affected every day and are truly gonna be impacted, whether or not we get a building, are the ones that we have either spoken to already or scheduled to speak next week, so, as well as our staff and support. So we thank you for everything y'all've done and for y'all's support, and just want you to recognize how bad the people of this parish truly need the facility. Not us, but those you serve and we serve need the space. So if y'all have any, he's gonna speak, and then if you have any questions or anything, we'll be glad to answer them.
I'm just here to answer any of your questions. Judge Katrera did a good job of setting forth our needs, which you all know and all aware. And I do wanna thank you, or most of you who spent the day with us on Wednesday and saw firsthand, as you have before, what our families and our children and our, and our community are faced with. Remember, nobody comes in here into our facility unless there are huge problems, and so we're there to help. We're there to assist, to lend a hand, and we really wanna thank you. You saw this need. You've seen this need and have done everything in your power to address it, and simply allowing this to be on the ballot speaks volumes about you wanting to do what's best for the children and the families of our parish. So thank you so much. We'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Judge, we do have some comments. Mr. Brain?
Thank y'all for being here tonight. I was, got the privilege of going on last Wednesday, and I definitely admire y'all for what y'all do. The facilities, I can only make one comment on the facilities, and that is that Calcasieu Parish deserves better. There's no doubt in my mind. It's just unbelievable, when I walked in there, that y'all work in those conditions. And, you know, the thing is, you wouldn't, I don't think that we could, any of us could go to another city in the 20th century and see what we have. So I just think, and Leland, I asked her when I first got there, I said, "Okay, show me where you park your car." I wanted to know where she parked her car and how she got in the building, and it blew me away, because she was concerned about her safety, and I saw that, and it was just, you know, again, I just wanna comment, thank y'all for inviting us, for those that went, for sure, and it was a very big eye-opener for me. So again, we deserve better, and I hope this bond issue passes on November 14th. Thank y'all for letting me be there, be a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Ms. Spell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Judge Katrera, Judge Bradbury, I just wanna say thank you for being wonderful hosts that day and giving us your time so we can educate ourselves on the issue, and that I personally thank you for what you do, and God bless you. So thank you for y'all's time, and I appreciate y'all being here this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Spell. Ms. Trimmie?
Thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there. Not, not any big deal, but being President of the Louisiana Police Jury Association, we had a region meeting in West Monroe that day, and we, I rode with Mike McLeod and his wife, Patsy, and got lost. We all got lost. It's hard to find West Monroe. It's not an easy way to get there, but we drove, we left that morning, and we drove back in about 1:30 the next morning to get home, and that's why I wasn't able to be there. I would've been there. And I have seen and know the extent of what these judges do for the young people and for the people of Calcasieu Parish. And they, I think, that all of the judges have an extremely difficult job of being able to listen, and that's the big key, to listen. And that's what, that's what we have to do as elected officials. We have to listen to the public, and we have to listen to different issues, but your issues are dealing with life and death for young people or for older people, like people that have been abused. And so hopefully, maybe I can get over there. I did go vote absentee today. I do wanna let you know that. And everyone that I've seen since then here in this building, I've reminded them to please go vote absentee. They will be open till 6:00 PM every evening, and Saturday, is it till noon or is it till 6:00? I'm not really sure, but you can vote absentee through Saturday. So please vote. Use your, what God gave us here in America. And the other thing that I wanted to say, and I just found this out this evening, I ran across the street, because I haven't seen my little brother in a while, I mean, across the courthouse there. I voted, and then I went to catch him, and he just found out also that once the sheriff rolls back his millage, he put it on because it's a renewal, and it wasn't a new one, but he's also committed to roll it back. Once that millage is rolled back, the overall tax to the people is gonna be two meals less than what they're paying right now. So I think that's very important, that this isn't gonna be an additional tax on anyone. And I did the DeQuincy Study Club last night. I did the presentation. And in showing the people why we need what we need, and also that the parish is going to pay the first year on this completely, and that 50% of the capital outlay is going to be paid with gaming funds, 50%. So this is a deal of a lifetime for the people of Calcasieu Parish. The last time this tax was brought up was in 1988, 21 years ago. And just think what Calcasieu Parish is today as opposed to 21 years ago, and we just can't operate on a 21-year-old millage. So we are here for Calcasieu Parish. I think that Calcasieu Parish is, I think, is the finest parish in the state of Louisiana. Not only that, with our Sheriff's Department, our District Attorney's Office, our judges, everything we have here are Class Act operations. And I feel like the people of Calcasieu Parish would like to see us be the leaders moving forward and setting this parish up not only to be the best in the state, but the best in the nation. And in 21 years, I don't know if I'll be here when this tax rolls off. None of us do. But I know that we're doing the right thing for the people of Calcasieu Parish, and we will serve them well. And they can count on this Police Jury to do every single thing that we have told them we would do. And Mark has done a terrific job putting this together, Mark McMurray, and making a covenant with the people that's already been filed in the records of the courthouse. The covenant is there, that 50% of this tax will be paid with gaming funds. And so please, people of Calcasieu Parish, you've put your... And so, please, people of Calhoun Parish, you've put your trust in this police jury for many years, in this staff, and I'm asking you to give us your trust on November 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We will have 6 o'clock action. I have a little more discussion on this matter, and then we'll go to 6 o'clock action in just a moment. So, if there's anyone here on that behalf, just hang with us, and we'll, as we finish up with a few other jurors that want to make a few comments. Dr. Mackey?
I wanted to say that I enjoyed your hospitality six years ago, and I have never, ever forgotten what I saw, and I hope everything goes well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Mr. Seis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also like, Dr. Mackey, would like to say, I definitely enjoyed your hospitality. I was there, and I definitely enjoyed it, and I also can say that when I left from there, you know, not only your own safety, but the safety of everybody that was involved in that whole operation, was a big concern for me. As Mr. McMurray explained to us the situation, we, I know myself, I had no idea what he was talking about, as he was talking about it, and explaining it to us, and I was just trying to picture it. But when we walked in there, and we witnessed, and seen exactly what all the families, what all y'all had to go through, you know, and I've mentioned to you, I applaud y'all, not only for what y'all have to do every day, but also, like you say, for the situation that we have, and I show, and looking forward to seeing a better facility for both of y'all. Good job. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Seis. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Judge Katrera, I'd like to just thank you for all you did that day to put that together. We had a booklet, it helped us through, we gave a lot of information, so that was awesome that you did that. I enjoyed going to every courtroom, and seeing how each judge relates to the public, and the specialty that they're in, but I'm going to give, you know, Judge Bradbury, that's to be in your courtroom, and see you trying to lift those kids up, and not just tell them who they aren't, and where they need to be, and what you got to do, to see them giving out chocolate bars, and clapping in the courtroom and stuff, to raise a kid up is the best thing we can do. And being an employer, I know that the only way to get the best job available is to give my people the best tools, and this court, this bond issue is the absolute best tool to make this work, and I've just, I believe the people of Calhoun Parish are going to do this. I'm voting yes, I can tell you that right now. So, I appreciate all y'all do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I would like to say we did have the opportunity to see some live, actually trials going on. We also, there was a drug day, I think, Mr. Bradbury, if you'd comment on that, on what we saw that day, and it was everything there, there was nothing staged for us to make it look as if anything was being put on. We got to go and see the inner workings of the court, and it was quite an eye-opening experience. The day that you were there, that was the drug court that happens weekly, I believe?
Yes, sir. At 7:00 AM every Wednesday morning, I do, I see 30 children in our community who are dealing with drugs in their lives, and have used that as an option. And what we do, we meet as a team, and we decide what's best for that child, and that family, and then we see them every week. We set up different screening instruments, to make sure that all their needs are being met, and that they're staying often, and I really appreciate the comment. We try to emphasize to these children, no, we're not here to punish them, we're simply here to change their behavior. And that's just one example. Judge Katrera can give you examples of how she works with many children who have mental health issues. And so, we have, that's a facet, or a part of this court that we have to deal with, and you all who were there to witness, and those who weren't there, but have been in our court before, and we thank you so much. You realize that these needs, and these drug court children, as I affectionately refer to as my drug-free court kids, I want to brag on Dane Boland, who happens to be here today, we're actually taking them camping this weekend. Some of them have never been in a tent, don't have any idea what it is to go on a camping trip. We're going camping this weekend. We're doing things with them to let them know that there is another way, that we can find ways to lift them, and turn them into productive members of our community. So, again, that's one of the many ways that you help us do that, by making sure that we have the right tools.
Thank you. Any other additional comments, Benner? We appreciate y'all being here, we hope everybody goes out and votes yes on the number four. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go back to item number five, which is a 6 o'clock action. Actually, we skipped item two. Mr. Stelly is going to do the invocation. I see he's here now, but, Mr. Bray, we appreciate you doing the invocation.
That's cute.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Item five. Hold a public hearing 6:00 PM as a result of notice to provide the owner of properties and described below. Owners said owners shall cause why the structures or said properties should not be condemned. Item 5-1 is 906 Prior Street in Mossville. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening. Our first property is at 906 Prior. We have one house. The owner of record there is Robert E. Lee, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days. So, I move.
Second. A motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Guidry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-1? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-1? Yes, ma'am? If you would, come to the microphone, please. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Linda Marie Lee Porter, and I'm part ownership of 906 Prior, and I'm calling on plea behalf of this address, a little more time if it's possible, to have some changes done to the structure.
Okay, Ms. Lee, actually, that's in my district, and that's the first time that we've visited about this situation. What are your intentions, would be my first question?
Well, FEMA said they would help with the situation, and I'm just asking for a little more time on this matter.
And do you feel as if this structure can be recovered, that you can put this back into a livable structure?
Yes.
Oh, hold on just a second, let me check with Mr. Robertson. He's done the inspection of this structure, I'd like to get his opinion on that. Mr. Robinson? Stay right there, if you don't mind, Ms. Lee.
Yes, the structure has been abandoned, you know, no one has lived in the structure for several years. They did purchase a permit to repair this structure back in 2007, and no work was ever done on it. And the grass, prior to us going out there, we had a complaint, not only about the structure, but the grass was tall also, and I did speak to Ms. Porter here one time, and she indicated they were going to get some permits, and start repairing the structure, and it never happened, so that's why we're at this point tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Porter, if you'd come back to the microphone, I do have a couple more questions, as well as some other jurors may. First off, I guess you understand that we're trying to, and the opportunities, to clean up the neighborhoods, and to get them looking better. We don't want to take someone's home away, that you have an opportunity to rebuild, get back into, and it's been a long time. Was this Hurricane Rita damage?
Yes.
And you're still waiting on FEMA money?
Yes.
Or something from Hurricane Rita?
Yes.
What kind of timeframe would you think, I mean, in something like this, once it gets to condemnation, I've seen this jury possibly give it a maximum, maybe 60 days, to get some real changes on this behalf, or, you know, 30 to 60 days. This has been, you know, it's 2009 now, it's been since 2005, and we, you know, the high grass problems is something we'd definitely have to address, we'd have to make sure the house was boarded up and secure, that nobody was going in there, if we were going to look at giving you an opportunity to do this without condemnation. Can you give me a time range, on how much time you think you would need?
90 days.
90 days. I have some other jurors that would like to speak on this behalf, as we talk about this. Mr. Stelly?
Jimmy, she's mentioning help from FEMA. Is there any way that we can get some sort of statement or documentation from them, saying when they're going to, there's going to stop being help from FEMA, so we'd actually know if that kind of help is really coming or not?
I definitely think that we can follow up, and we have a staff member that was a former FEMA employee, and I think that certainly, we, yeah, we could definitely follow up.
I'm for saving the house, I mean, if it's possible, but I'd like to know, you know, if there is really FEMA money out there, you know?
Thank you, Ms. Stelly. Mr. Guidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Linda, has someone been out to the house to maybe give you an idea as to what the cost would probably be?
No.
To, so you don't really have an idea as to what it's probably going to cost to get it back?
No, I don't.
In a living condition?
No, I don't.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Ms. Lee, on the first picture we have here, of course, the grass is high, but there's a little white plastic chair sitting out in front of this house, that obviously is recently put there, it looks fairly, is somebody hanging out at this property, sitting around? Why would that little chair be just sitting there? Mr. Robertson, you want to take that? I mean, it's a fairly, I mean, it looks like somebody's hanging around that property.
No, not by my knowledge. I've been having someone check on it when I can't, and no.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Landry?
Before I ask my question, what was the last statement? Somebody's hanging around that property. So, okay. Mr. Robinson, when I look at the pictures, is there something added on to the back of that house? Is that some type of little storage building, or what is that?
Let him have the microphone, because we need to hear him.
It looks worse than the, some of the pictures don't look too bad, but that little part there in the back, it looks like that's about to fall down.
Yeah, let me look at my pictures.
It looks rotten, or has termites or something.
Yeah, and that's why we tried to take a lot of pictures of this structure, to let y'all see the exact condition of the structure.
Could you get inside the house?
I don't think they could get inside. I think the house was, I think the doors were locked, and, you know, we didn't want to break in or anything.
I mean, the blue tarp is blown off.
Correct, and you can see the remnants of the blue tarp is still there.
I would guess the roof's leaking.
So, and, but there are a lot of rotten parts of the home, yes.
I mean, looking at that, it costs more to fix it than it would, than I think it would be worth. I mean, the front part doesn't look too bad. Ma'am, would you come to the microphone? Have you been inside the house?
Yes, I have.
Is it leaking in there? Is it full of water, or?
At the time when I went in, it wasn't.
No mold problems, or anything?
If it is, it's not seen.
Okay. How long ago did you go in the house?
About a year ago. That was the last time, but several times before that.
And how long have you been working with FEMA?
It's been some time.
Yeah. I don't know if you know it, but they'll lie to people.
Maybe that's why it's taken so long.
I mean, I'll tell you, they're going to lie to you. Maybe not on purpose, but they end up somehow, they say a lot of things that don't happen, and you're not the only victim of that. But, you know, something's wrong. If you've been waiting four years, there's a problem. I don't, what it is, I don't know, and maybe our staff can help you, but most people that are going to get, or was going to get money, they've already gotten it. As far as I know, they, haven't they, they pretty much wrapped that thing up? I mean, if, I'm not going to say there's not any still hanging, but there's a reason why you hadn't got paid, and you're really going to have to figure that out. If it hadn't happened in four years, something tells me it's not going to happen in 90 days. I think in 90 days, we're going to be right back where we are today, but, I mean, I don't mind giving you a chance, but you really need to, and before you spend, if you do happen to get the money, you really need to find out how much it's going to cost, so you don't waste the money. I mean, this will just be like a big hole, you're just going to keep putting money in it, and you're still not going to have nothing when you get through. They may not give you enough to actually fix it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Linda, I have a lot of concerns, particularly whether or not you would be able to accomplish and get this house, whereas it will pass an inspection. And, once you've started work on this, if you should get this money within the 90 days, if it's not completed, then you'll have to come back up, I suppose, but it seems like it's an awful lot of work that have to be done, and just the mere fact that you don't even know and estimate how much it would cost you to get this, I think you have a lot cut out for you, but I'm willing to, you know, to give you extra time, but a lot of things will have to happen, from what I'm looking at. So, don't be disperated if this doesn't work out for you. Thank you, sir. And I have one question.
Go ahead, follow up.
Who was living in this home before the hurricane?
Some of the family members.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Guidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise I'll be brief again. Ms. Linda, I'm all for wanting to help you and get you back into this home. Can you tell me, what is this home going to be used for? Is this a piece of property that you plan on moving into, or putting a family member into, or leasing, renting? What's going to be the purpose of what you're going to do with this property, ma'am?
It's possibly maybe family members, not myself speaking at the moment, no.
Okay, okay. So, at this point in time right now, you don't have anybody basically lined up to come and give you some type of estimate on what it's going to cost, or even the due date of, like Mr. Landry said, about FEMA, hopefully trying to reimburse you some of this money. My only concerns is, Ms. Linda, is that we don't want you to invest money and time in this, and you can't see an end date as to when this structure could possibly be livable again. Is that something that you can understand as to what I'm saying to you? I don't want you to get put out on a limb by not having the necessary means to finish what you truly want to start, and hopefully get it done. Is that a possibility, that you may run into some problems, and possibly even getting this started without the money from FEMA, or is that something you think you can get started?
I would need FEMA's help, definitely.
I'm just concerned, Mr. President.
Financially, it is a problem, financially.
If we put a date on it, it's just going to be tough, I guess, putting a timeline on something right now, that we can't have any means to an end, even get it started.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Andrew Pons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Landry, you widened my horizons, I could not believe you said that the federal government would lie to people, it just absolutely blew me out of the water.
You every day.
Why don't we give her some time to put some numbers together, 30 days, and I agree with Kevin, it's probably going to be out of reach. The structure looks awfully rundown, for the lack of a better phrase. I wouldn't have a problem with giving her some time to come back and say, "I got this figured, and I can't afford to do it." And it's been there for four or five years, another 30 days won't make any difference, and that's, I rest my case.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pons. I know that Mr. Landry and I were visiting about that, with this kind of being in my district, and us discussing about what we could do. I think I would like to possibly see a 30-day extension of this, where you work with our staff, to see if there was any realistic hope of you getting money from FEMA, or if there's any realistic hope of this house surviving, working with our staff, and Mr. Robinson, to find out if it's worth recovering this house. We may be also able to tell you that, you know, you'd be throwing money down a hole, as it was said earlier, a money pit, and, well, we have folks that could help you with that, and we could help you with that in the next 30 days, and we can come back and make a decision on this behalf. I'll be more willing to work with you in any way that I can. Mr. Landry made the motion. Mr. Landry?
I'll change my motion to that, and then just have her work with staff, and I would also like to ask her, in the meantime, please go mow the grass, pick up all the trash outside, that way, at least the yard, you know, will look like somebody lives there, in the meantime.
Thank you.
And we had a second by Mr. Guidry, I think, on that motion. So, we are, we got a motion second on that. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, and one other thing, while you're having that 30 days, you ought to look into finding someone to tear it down for you, those prices also, instead of having to go through the parish, so use that 30 days to look at all avenues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, I will.
And we can help you there. Mr. Stelly?
Does she have to come back, or are we condemning tonight, or does she have to come back and go through the whole procedure again?
I think that we would defer for 30 days on the condemnation, would be what Mr. Landry's motion would be, and then we can work with staff, and then they can make a recommendation in 30 days.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll give you some time, and we can work quick enough to really find out the answers that we need, in a 30-day period, to find out exactly what we need to do on your behalf. Also, too, if, they can give you my phone number out here, you and I can work together on this, be more than happy to help you in any way that I can.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, personal privilege, please. Just want to make sure, before she leaves, that she confers with Mr. Vickers, to make sure that they connect as to what she's supposed to be doing.
Absolutely. Let's get all your information with our staff, and we have some staff members in the back, or whatever, Ms. Wallace could get that information for you, sitting back there, make sure you have all the Ms. Wallace could get that information for you, sitting back there, and make sure you have all the numbers and guidelines to help you in every way that we can.
Thank you so much.
Surely.
Thank you, Ms. Linda.
I have a motion second on item 5-1. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion second, uh, Madam Secretary, you've got that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Any objection? Hearing none. 5-1 carries. 5-2 is, uh, 693 Bryan Street, North Sulphur area. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is one house. Uh, the owner is Daniel Ray Adaway. Uh, we recommend this house be condemned and removed in 30 days. Move.
Second.
I got a motion by Dr. Mackey. Who was it by?
Chris.
By Mr. Landry and second by Mr. Who was second?
I did.
And Mr. Brahm on that. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-2? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-2? I have a motion, second condemn. In discussion, any objection? Hearing none. 5-2 carries. 5-3, 1301 Hungerford Road, La Blue Settlement area. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is one manufactured home. Uh, the owner is Woodrose Jubere et al., and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days. Move.
Second. Motion by Dr. Mackey, second by Mr. Stelly on item 5-3. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-3? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-3? Any discussion by the jurors? Any objection? Hearing none. 5-3 carries. 5-4 is 1902 Woodell Lane.
Move on 5-4.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Mr. Gidry on item 5-4. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is, uh, one accessory building. Um, the owner is Michael Dips Oliver, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
I have a motion, second, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there anybody that wanna speak, would like to speak on item 5-4? Is there anyone that would like to speak on item 5-4? I have a motion, second, in discussion by the jurors. Hearing none. 5-4 carries. 5-5, 1413 Sarah Street, Sulphur, Louisiana. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is one house and two accessory buildings. Uh, the owner is Anthony John Peacock Senior, and we recommend all these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
A motion by Ms. Griffin, second by Mr. Stelly on item 5-5. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-5? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-5? I have a motion, second on 5-5. Any discussion by the jurors? Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5-5 carries. Item 5-6 is 171 South Side.
Move to defer for 60 days.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Hassan to defer for 60 days, second by Mr. Gidry to defer for 60 days.
Question.
And let me, let me get just a moment. Mr. Robinson, would you tell us the matter on that behalf?
Yes, this is, uh, one manufactured home. Uh, it's at 171 South Side Street. The owner is Betty Ann Bolton et al., and we would recommend it be condemned and removed in 30 days, but Mr. Hassan is wanting a deferral on this.
Okay, and we do have some discussion. I have a motion, second, so we are open discussion.
You want me to explain it?
I would love for you to explain it.
Yes. Ms. Bolton is current... First of all, Mr. Robinson, uh, back me up on this. There were several violations that has been cleaned up throughout the yard and, uh, other things removed. The last thing is this trailer. Uh, this sits behind her house. She's using it as storage. And currently, she is in Shreveport seeking, um, she's very sick. She was not able to attend this meeting. She did ask for 60 days so she could get back into town, get, uh, some personal effects out of there so she could have it emptied to have it moved off.
Let me make sure I'm on the right one. Which?
Okay, Ms. Griffin.
5.6.
Which is located in District 3?
No, ma'am.
No. No, ma'am, it's, uh...
Okay, I'm on the wrong one.
All right.
I got you. Okay, good.
5-6. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-6? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-6?
I need some clarification. I am out of order because it's a misprint.
I hope I'm not out of order. 5-6.
We're gonna let you down.
171 South Side in Carlos area. That's the one I'm on?
Yeah. She was on the, um...
No problem. Carry on. I want to find out what, what's going on in my district and somebody is deferring for 30 days, but since we have that cleared up, let's carry on. I'm always willing to identify enemies.
Can y'all see the sweat beads on my forehead?
If the glare wasn't there, I probably could.
All right, I got a motion to defer for 60 days on item 5-6. If one in the audience wants to speak, any discussion, any objection? Hearing none. 5-6 carries. 5-7, 1906 Woodell Lane. Got a motion by Dr. Mackey.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Brahm, which, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, there's one, uh, this is one accessory building. Um, the owner is George M. McGee et al., and, uh, we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days. Move.
Well, I got a motion by Dr. Mackey, a second by Mr. Brahm to, to condemn. Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Is there anyone like to speak on item 5-7? 1906 Woodell Lane. Anyone like to speak on item 5-7? Any, uh, discussion by the jurors? Any objection? Hearing none. 5-7 carries. Item 5-8, West Houston River Road, North Sulphur. Mr. Robinson?
I'll move on that one.
Hang on just a second. Let him, get this back in order first. Mr. Robinson, and then we'll make our moves.
Thank you.
And see what his recommendations are.
Okay, there, there's two manufactured homes on this piece of property. Uh, the owner is Palvest Incorporated, and we recommend both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
I need a motion. Ms. Trumey?
I'll make that motion.
And second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Landry on 5-8.
But I would like to ask some questions.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-8? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-8? Ms. Trumey?
Yes, uh, Mr. Robinson. Have you heard anything at all from the owners of this property? I mean, have they agreed to take this down in 30 days?
No, ma'am, we haven't heard anything. Uh, uh, we haven't... We faxed, there was a, uh, a, a large amount of junk that was on the property, and we cleaned that up. We cut the grass. And the lady, uh, that was living there did call us about that, but, uh, and I, and I indicated to her what was gonna happen, and they've made no indication, anyone, about, anything about the structures.
Both of these, there's two trailers, right?
Correct.
And both of these trailers are owned by Palvest. Do they own the property too?
Well, they own the property.
I'm confused.
Right. They own the property, but they're, they were selling it to this lady, bond for deed.
Own a bond for deed?
Correct.
Okay.
So, uh, they probably don't own the... I'm assuming they don't own the mobile homes, but they do own the property.
So Palvest owns the property?
Correct.
And is... Tell me about this lady that owns the trailers.
Well, other than, uh, I, I think I spoke to her one time, and, uh, they did live, uh, in one or and maybe had other family members that lived in the other one. And, uh, they, as you can see, they've just been abandoned. They just abandoned the property. I don't know if they've defaulted on their loan or not.
You know where the lady that lived in these trailers, do you know where she's living right now?
No, ma'am, we don't.
And what is her name?
Uh, I, I can't remember. It was, uh, I think her last name was Casti-Castillo, maybe?
Costello?
Yeah.
And, uh, so since the property is owned by Palvest and the mobile, mobile homes are owned, uh, owned by, uh, someone that has them own the Palvest property, that they were selling bond for deed and probably, uh, it'll never be paid off, so they'll just continue to take it back. Who will, uh, how will you be able to get the cost of this back? Because you, uh, you know, you could get it when you went and cleaned up the property from Palvest 'cause you can add it to their tax bill. But by taking these trailers off, how do, who, who pays for that? I need to know that.
It's gonna be the property owner, Palvest.
Okay, so it's not gonna be the lady that owns the trailer?
No, ma'am.
Are they aware of that?
Um, I'm sure Palvest is, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trumey. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I have a motion, second, on 5-8. Any objection? Hearing none. 5-8 carries. 5-9, 5828 Ross Avenue, Lot 12, Toomey area. Mr. Robinson?
Uh, there's one house on this property. The owner is Verna Teal, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
A motion by Mr. Hassan, need a second.
Again.
Second by Mr. Scott on item 5-9. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-9? Anyone in the audience like to speak on item 5-9? Any discussion by any jurors? Any objection? Hearing none. 5-9 carries. 5-10, 856 Willis Springs Road, Northwest Lake area. Mr. Robinson?
There's one house on this property. Uh, the owner is Tracy Lynn Goodwin, and we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Motion by Mr. Brahm, second by, second by Mr. Hassan on item 5-10. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item 5-10? Anyone in the audience like to speak on item 5-10? Any jurors discussion? Landry?
Yeah, Landry. Nice to meet you. This is the point of information. I noticed that out of 10, there are five of them from Police Jury District 14, which I've just realized is actually your district. So 50% of the condemnations are from your district. What exactly is going on in your district? Why are there so many condemnations there?
Can't afford to be trashy in Calcasieu Parish. Cleaning it up.
I wondered. Something's happened. Or you're, or you're slacking. I don't know which.
No, no, we're cleaning up our parish.
Okay.
I noticed that too. I was a little nervous about that. Jimmy, get him out of there.
There's five voters.
Anyhow, I got a motion and second. No discussion from anyone in the audience on 5-10. Any objection? Hearing none. 5-10 carries. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your work tonight. Now, we will go back to, uh, item 8. Item 8 will be received report from Representatives of the Corps of Engineers on the progress of the Calcasieu River Basin study. Claude?
We have Mr. Nick Sims with us from the Corps of Engineers, and the Corps is, uh, finalizing their study, and they've come to give the results to the jury, and I won't sell any of Nick's thunder. Let him go and, uh, talk, and if he has some questions, I'll try to answer him when he's through.
We have a presentation. Mr. Sims, if you would, would you please give your name and address for the record?
Yes, I sure will. My name is Nick Sims, 4132 St. Charles, New Orleans, Louisiana. All right, well, good evening, as Claude said. My name is Nick Sims. I'm a project manager with the Corps of Engineers, and tonight I'm gonna give an update on the Calcasieu River Basin feasibility study. This is a drainage study that we've been conducting for the past few years that is looking at flood reduction measures in Gravity Drainage Districts 4, 5, and the city of Lake Charles. Next slide, please. Quick rundown of what we're gonna go through tonight. Um, first, we're gonna look at the project background, go through the scope of work, see what exactly we were tasked to do with this study. Um, look at our plan formulation process. This will go through the alternatives that we looked at to reduce the flood measures in the area. Go through all alternative screening, um, look at some floodplain maps so you can see when we did run these reduction measures, where the flood, the flood stages were reduced in certain areas. Look at our preliminary alternative analysis. That goes into our economic analysis. Look at what we think is the recommended plan at this point, and then finally, our path forward. Next slide. Okay, background on the study. In 2001, the Corps completed a favorable reconnaissance study. In the civil works process, which is what this particular study is in, the first phase is the reconnaissance study. You go through and you look at the area, just the broad area, and see if you have any type of problem and see if there is a federal interest for this problem. With this study, we looked at Bayou DN. We saw that there were some flooding, flooding problems in that area. We didn't really go into how we can alleviate these problems, but we saw that there was a federal interest. So that allowed us to move into Phase 2, which is the feasibility phase of the civil works process. We moved into that phase on May 3rd, 2005, when we signed a feasibility cost share agreement with the police jury. Now, the city of Lake Charles and the Drainage Districts 4 and 5 are also our cost-sharing partners, but the police jury is the official partner for this study. And what we had was a $2.3 million study to, like I said, try to alleviate some of the drainage problems in the area. It was cost shared at 50/50, 1.15 coming from the Corps and 1.15 coming from the police jury, the city, and the two drainage districts. Next slide, please. Okay, the scope, what exactly we're looking at. Um, as I mentioned, we wanted, we looked at this area. We worked closely with the parish engineers and the Drainage District engineers to see where the biggest problems were in this area. Um, while the recon study only looked at Bayou DN, speaking with everybody, we noticed, well, y'all are having problems in other areas. So we decided to look at these other streams also. And if you can see by the graphic up here where the outlined areas, those are the streams that we're studying in the study. It includes W-5, W-4, Hippolyte Cooley, Black Bayou, Contraband, Bayou Shoopick, DN, W-16, and Coachee Cooley also. And those are the reaches, um, as far as we went on each of those particular streams. Next slide, please. Okay, so after we decided what our study area was gonna be, we then went into actual, the actual study. Um, the first thing we did was collect survey information for each of the streams that you saw on that previous slide. Um, we completed the survey effort, and this information has been turned over to the parish. We then went and put these into our hydraulic models. And this allowed us to create existing condition models for each of the streams in the area. Um, and what this does is it shows you when you have a certain type of rain event, it will show you in what areas you're gonna see flooding. So with these existing condition models, um, Bayou DN, you can see, okay, if we have a 10-year event, this area will see flooding. Next, after that, we saw where it was gonna flood, so we had to see how, how can we get these flood stages down? So we went through what we called the, um, alternative process to look at how to lower these stages. We looked at a number of things for each of these streams, um, dredging, pump stations, detention ponds. And the next few slides, you'll see what we did on each of these slides. But we have finished all of the models, the existing conditions and alternative conditions models for all of the streams in the area. Um, we do have one small part on Bayou Contraband to complete, but that is, uh, that's a small part of the entire model job we had. Um, a large part of this study so far has been the hydraulic modeling that we've completed. Um, we spent a great deal of time and about $1.2 million on these models. And they have been turned over to the parish, and they will be a very powerful tool for the parish to use. If we cannot get a project out of this study, the parish does still have these models. So a few years down the road, if they see we're having a problem in a particular area, they can use these models and look at some alternatives they might want, and they will see what effects these will have. So with the, uh, modeling completed, we then moved into our alternative analysis, which is the economic portion. And we finished that up for each of them, and we'll get into those results shortly, too. Next slide, please. Okay, I mentioned the alternatives that we ran, these reduction measures. I'm not gonna go through all of these. I have a slide in a second that will, um, will have all the streams. You can see what exactly we did for each of them, but I do wanna touch on Bayou DN for a second. These alternatives we got because working with the parish, um, DEQ had a study in that area along with Bayou DN group, and they had some HTRW issues on Bayou DN. DEQ did a study very similar to the one that we're doing on how to clean up this particular stream. Their recommendations were the three that you see here, um, bank-to-bank cap-capping with concrete mat, dredging, and covering with material from a local sediment source. So the parish asked us to see what exactly would happen if we put this in here to clean up this particular stream. And we've got the results of that. We'll get to in a few slides. But that's how we came up with the alternatives for Bayou DN. Um, with Shoopick, we looked at dredging, W-16, a pump station at Griffith Canal, and Contraband dredging, dredging, and a three-and-a-half acre detention pond. Next slide. W-4 and W-5 were also dredging. Um, we looked at 130-acre detention pond in this area. That is a very large detention pond. It's really not that feasible, but we wanted to look at if we had the biggest possible detention pond in the area, and that would lower the stages. Then we could go back and shorten what we were doing, but first we wanna see if we had a large one there, if it would have any impacts. Um, with Black Bayou and Hippolyte, we also looked at dredging and culvert replacement. And with Coachee, we looked at increased pumping, um, sediment clearing, and dredging also. Next slide. And this shows you, um, what we just went over. The red area... The red areas here are where we dredged and on what particular stream. I know it's kind of hard to see from here, but I think you can make out the red, and you see the majority of the alternatives that we looked at did go with dredging. Um, in addition, we've got the yellow here. See if you can tell by W-sixteen and Cochee, we got two pumping stations, um, concrete lining a portion of W-four, W-five here in the green. Then the culvert replacement and bridge replacement along Black and Hippolyte, and finally, the two detention ponds here. So that's really just an overview of the alternatives that we ran stuck into our models. Next slide. Okay, so we did our existing condition models, we saw where it was flooding, um, we saw, we thought about what we can do. We had models on that to see if we lowered the flood stages. So now it's time to start screening these particular, these potential projects down, to see if we could move forward with a federal project on any of these streams. What we looked at first were Bay D N and Bay Shu Pic. As the DEQ study and when our environmental team went out showed, there are HTRW issues in these two streams. Um, they have some sediment contamination, specifically mercury, dioxin, and furan. Because of this, we had to eliminate those from our alternative screening process. Um, the federal government cannot move forward with a project as long as there are any type of HTRW issues in the area. In order for us to move forward, these issues must be cleaned up. So until these two streams do get clean of any of the HTRW issues, we just can't move forward. We cannot recommend a project in any area like that. So because of that, these two streams were eliminated from consideration. Next, we looked at Cochee Cooley. Um, when we ran our alternative condition models, we did not see the flood stage lowering that we, that we, we thought we would. Um, just about point-one to point-three feet was the maximum stage lowerings that we saw with our alternatives. Because of this, we didn't feel it would be prudent to move forward with this stream. Um, we just, we weren't lowering the stages enough to get into any benefits, which we'll go to in a second. But our hydraulic analysis for the other streams did show a general decrease in the flood stages of all the remaining streams. Um, and what this is, it, it varies from stream to stream and from event to event. But in some, some cases, we saw two-feet drops, sometimes we saw one-and-a-half feet. It, it just, it really varies on the event and the particular area of the stream. But the analysis did show lowering of the stages, so we moved forward into the economic analysis part with these streams. Sixteen, W-four, W-five, Contraband, Hippolyte, and Black Bayou. Next slide. Okay, here we have some of the flood maps that are with the existing conditions models and the proposed conditions models. Again, these are a little hard to see, but this is W-sixteen for a hundred-year event. What you're looking at here, the purple is the floodplain with the alternative in place, with the pump station at Griffith Canal. This green area is including the existing conditions floodplain. So the green is where we lowered the stages for this particular stream on a hundred-year event. Um, and you see there are some structures in there where you can get a lot of flood damage reduction benefits. Um, and again, that comes into play when we start analyzing what we can move forward with. Next slide. This is the W-four, W-five, hundred-year, um, existing versus proposed floodplains. Again, we don't see as many, as much lowerings. You do have our green here and our green in this area. Now, this is just the hundred-year. When you look at the one-year event, the five-year event, there are lowerings also, but if we were to show you all of the floodplain, it, it would take a lot longer to go through this. We just kind of wanted to give you an idea of what we have generated with these models. Next slide, please. Um, here's Contraband, it, it's a little less than the others also. There are, there's some green sprinkled in there throughout. But as you can see with this one, you are getting a lot of flooding in the Contraband area. And a lot of this flooding is reaching structures and causing damages, and that's going to come into play here shortly. Next slide. Here's Hippolyte and Black, the hundred-year. Um, we don't have any green on this one, but I want you to pay attention to these two areas. This is the L-one lateral and the L-three and L-five laterals. Um, we did see for the hundred-year, not much lowerings, but for the one and five-year, we saw significant lowerings, and we had a lot of structures in this area. So we ended up getting a lot of benefits from these two areas. Next slide. And here you can see the L-three and L-five for the five-year event. If you look here at the green, all this area, this is where our models show that running this alternative of the dredging and culvert replacement, this is what was lowered in here. And you see we've got a lot of homes and structures in this area. Um, the L-one stream saw the same thing. Unfortunately, we don't have that map here, but we will see, we have a graph next that'll show you exactly the damages and benefits we saw from that. Next slide. Okay, this is very hard to see, but what this is, is where our economic analysis came into play. We took our existing condition models, our economic team went out, and they looked at the structures that were in the area. From there, they can put a value on these structures. They can see as long as water is going and getting into the structures and causing damages, and that's what we have here in this first column. And I, I can't really see them, but I know some of the numbers, and I'll call those out to you in a second. But you take those damages, those are the without-project damages, what you're seeing now from flooding. The next column is when you put our alternatives in place, the dredging, the pump stations. What do the stages lower? And if flooding, water was getting into the homes, is it causing less damages now with those alternatives in place? And then our third column is our benefits. That is the difference between the with-project, uh, with-project damages and without-project damages. Now, here at Contraband, I know you can't see it, but you'll just have to believe me. We saw about nine million dollars worth of average annual damages without a project. So that tells us that water is getting into homes on, on a, a lot of events for this area, and it's damaging these particular structures. If you look at the next column, that is with, with our alternatives in place, that number is about, I believe the first number is nine-point-nine, the next is nine-point-one. What we're getting at is when we put the alternative in place, we did not lower the stages in this particular stream enough to see any reduction in the damages. Therefore, we got very low flood damage reduction benefits in this particular area. Um, we're going to skip over Black and Hippolyte for the moment, go to Pethon, W-sixteen. This number without-project damages was about two-point-two million, which you can see, that's not as high as the Contraband area. So what that's telling us is while there is flooding in the area, you can see that this flooding might not be getting into the homes and damaging the structures. And that's a key part to, to our economic analysis, uh, when we go to try to get these benefits from there. If the flooding's in the street and it's not getting into the homes, we really can't capture those benefits for it. But with this stream, it was about two-point-two, um, without the project, I believe that's one-point-two, um, without, either way, it's a very small about amount of benefits, maybe two-hundred thousand. With W-four, W-five, we got even less damages. Again, that's telling us while there is flooding, it's not damaging the structures there. And we have about one million in total damages without a project, and then maybe eight-hundred thousand with the project. So we're not, we're not lowering these damages, we're not getting very significant benefits from, for any of these particular projects. But when you look at Black Bayou and Hippolyte, particularly the L-one, L-three, and L-five streams, those, that's the one that I, we had pointed out on that floodplain map. We saw very large amount of damages without a project now. I believe L-one has seven million, L-three, two million, and L-five, four million. So we're seeing a lot of structure damage. Then, I wish you could see this one, with the project in there, we significantly cut down these damages. Um, we went from about seven million to two million on L-one. I can't see the other two, but we ended up having about nine million dollars worth of benefits from this particular stream. So when we put that project in place, we saw a lot of reduction in the damages for this stream. Next slide, please. Okay, so then we looked at it, this was the stream where we saw the greatest amount of benefits. Well, we wanted to look and see what was exactly causing these benefits. The alternatives we ran were dredging and culvert replacement for this stream. If you look here in your first column, it shows you that nine million dollar number. That's the benefits with both dredging and the culverts. Next, we wanted to go in and see, okay, what if you only dredge this area? Would you see the same amount of benefits? There you got about five million dollars. So you've still got a large amount, but not quite as much. And you look at the last one, this is culvert replacement only on this stream. Our analysis showed about seven-point-five million dollars worth of benefits. Where this comes into play is when we are recommending a plan, it has to be both environmentally and economically justifiable. That comes into when we get a benefit-to-cost ratio on a particular stream. That's where you take these benefits that we've been discussing, which are the damages without a project, the difference between that and the damages with. And then you take your construction costs, and you get an average, um, construction cost per year. You compare the two, and you get what's called a benefit-to-cost ratio. You must have a B C greater than one to move forward with a federal project. Well, with these particular streams, our construction cost is about ten million dollars to dredge and replace the culverts on Hippolyte and Black. So when you get a yearly construction cost, you're looking at a pretty good B C ratio with nine million dollars worth of benefits. Um, again, if you just look at the dredging, that was about nine-point-five million dollars worth of that alternative. You got a good B C again. But if you look at the seven-point-five million in benefits with just the culvert replacement, the culvert replacement, we costed that about five-hundred thousand dollars. So you're going to have a very large benefit-to-cost ratio with just that one alternative. Next slide, please. So when we move into plan selection, and I hinted to this earlier, um, our guidance requires that we must recommend an alternative that maximizes the benefits. So on that previous slide, as I showed you, we had benefits on Black and Hippolyte streams, but to maximize it, we need the one with the greatest B C ratio. With Contraband, W-sixteen, W-four, and W-five, W-sixteen, W-four, and W-five, we just did not see the damages in those streams. Um, again, there is flooding there, but this flooding is not getting into structures and causing damages that we can capture. So we had to eliminate those three. Contraband, we did see the damages, but we just couldn't reduce them enough to catch the benefits that we needed. So all of those had a B C ratio less than one. But with Black and Hippolyte, our preliminary B Cs were greater than ten, which is a very strong B C ratio, which can lead to a very strong project. Next slide, please. And this led us to select alternatively-selected plan, which is, um, on Black and Hippolyte with the culvert replacement. We've got a replacement of a railroad, railroad culvert on Tom A Bear, uh, replaced two five-feet diameter ones with two ten-feet. Um, Gaudier, I don't know if I pronounced that right.
Goche.
Goche, Goche Road, um, replaced a seven-foot diameter with two eight-foot diameter. And then one on Corbina, two six-foot diameter with two eight-foot diameter. Also, replacement of a partial abandoned bridge north of Lincoln Road. And the approximate cost that we came up for this is five-hundred thousand dollars. Um, that does not include any real estate cost or mitigations that we would have, but it should not increase dramatically from that cost. Next slide. So where's our path forward now? Um, next, we have to do what's called an altern, alternative formulation briefing with our division offices. That's going to be very similar to what we just did here. Um, we will go to our division office and explain to them how we went from our nine streams at the beginning and had to screen these down to just the one project that we have now. Um, then we will, we have feasibility level design, we should finish that by April twentieth. Environmental compliance in April also. And we've got to get an environmental assessment and a finding of no significant impacts on the area. Then we'll start our review process, or rather, finish it up in July of two thousand and ten. And we hope to have a draft feasibility report recommending this plan for approval in August of ten. Um, it will then go to our division offices and our headquarters offices for approval, and hopefully, a chief's report seeking congressional authorization, construction in February two thousand and eleven. So I guess in closing, um, we, we started out with a lot of streams on this project, and I know we wanted to get something in each of them. But because of the environmental issues and because of the economic justification that we must have to move forward with a federal project, we had to cut this down to just the one part with, uh, Hippolyte and Black. But the good news is, it, it has a very strong benefit-to-cost ratio, and that is something that they, they really do look at when they're looking to approve a report and get authorization for construction. So that is good news. And, um, the models, I mean, that, that is a very big part of this study, these hydraulic models that we finished. And like I said, that will be a tool that the parish can use in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. We do have some questions for some of the jurors. Mr. Hassan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my first question is about this alternative screening, Bayou Den and Shu Pic Bayou. Basically, no recommendation because nothing can be done due to environmental problems.
Until, we did complete the models, and we did look at some alternatives. We did see some stage lowering with the dredging and, uh, Shu Pic, but yes, because there are HTRW issues there, we cannot move forward with any project.
Did y'all do the benefit?
No.
Cost analysis on any of those?
We did not move, because we could not...
So you stopped?
We stopped right then. And once we found that, we stopped on those two.
Okay.
Because we would not be able to move forward, we didn't find, we, yes, we stopped on those two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Mr. Foreman?
I guess, uh, with the Bayou Den pollutants that exist there, is it possible to continue with the, uh, with the cost analysis? Even though there's pollutants that, if, if we can get past the pollutants, can we then get a project to dredge it out in other places? Is that a possibility?
Well, let me make sure I understand. Did you say, can we move forward with the, the economics on it?
That's right.
And then see?
At least we'll have a tool. We'll have some information that's going to load us later on down the line.
And that is an option we could do, but funding for this project, we, we want to finish up with what we have. We don't want to have to come back and ask for more money. In order for us to go do the economic analysis for that particular stream, that is going to put us over budget in what we already are. We would have to come back and ask for more funding for it. And because we cannot, as it is now, we would not be able to move forward with it. So we would have a hard time justifying going and continuing to do an economic analysis or doing anything else on that stream, because kind of the way they look at it is, well, nothing can happen, so we need to screen that out right now.
It was part of the initial scope of the project was for this to take place. And the fact that that was a roadblock along the line shouldn't have impacted the overall cost of the project. I guess my concerns in this is that, you know, th, these pollutants have been there for numbers and numbers of years. We have tugboats that run up and down that, that bayou on a pretty regular basis. They churn this stuff up every time they go down that bayou. And, and we're just at a, at a standstill on this for so many years that a lot of people are really aggravated with it. Who, who actually will have the final say-so as to what kind of mitigation on the HTRW issues could take place? Is it y'all, or the DEQ, or who, who has that final say-so?
Well...
Whether anything can be done?
As far as a federal project or anything?
Just, just, uh, the fact that that needs to get cleaned up, um...
It's going to depend on your agency. Um, and one thing I didn't mention there, when we did run the DEQ, um, recommendations for alternatives, it did show that we did not see an increase in the flooding or, it, it seemed to make no difference in the flood stages there. It was my understanding that y'all were moving forward with those DEQ recommendations, that, that might not be the case. But as far as DEQ would go, um, I mean, we couldn't tell them that they couldn't clean it up. That, we, we wouldn't have that authority.
They don't need your blessing, or, or you don't need their blessing for anybody to move forward.
No.
They'll operate completely independently.
We are independent from each other, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Foreman? Mr. Anderson, I'm going to come to you just a moment. Uh, Mr. Spark wanted to add something real quickly, then I'll come back to you. Okay, you can wait. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bear with me for just a minute, make sure we're both going on in the same place. After Hurricane Rita came through, I'm talking about Shu Pic Bay now, okay? I guess we're established before we're talking about it. The, uh, debris and the trees that fell into, into Shu Pic Bay on the... The debris and the trees that fell into Shoe Peak Bay on the west side of 27, if you're familiar with the area, if you're on Highway 27 going south.
Okay.
Shoe Peak Bay comes from way down and meanders around and then goes under the 27 bridge and then out into the, and I can't never remember if it empties into, is it emptying into the channel or the?
Intercostal.
Intercostal canal. Okay. One of the problems that I hear from Gravity Drainage Board is that if there was any kind of way that east of 27 could be dredged, and it's not a long area, but an area where the bay is actually silted up so deep that there's only a minimum amount of water that can go through and empty into the intercoastal, okay? Is there, is the hang-up because of y'all, your agency, or is it a hang-up somewhere else?
As to why that area hasn't been dredged yet?
Correct.
Well, if they were trying to get us to do it, then it would be.
I'm not asking you to do it.
Okay. As anybody else?
Yeah.
No. We, I would say no, but there could be some other circumstances. I'm not exactly sure, but I don't see why we would stop anybody else from going out.
And that's the, I guess where I'm going with this. And I want to kind of get it clear through you before I go back to Gravity Drainage Board and see what we can do possibly about to find out what the cost of dredging, because so many people flood because of the fact that the water cannot leave on a timely basis.
Yes.
And then what happens, it backs up because of the fact that it can't get into the intercoastal canal. And that's basically what I was trying to find out from you.
Now, I can tell you, we did run that alternative, and we saw some floods from stage lowering, but it was not very significant, what we saw, for the amount that we dredged. We did not put any cost to it, or we didn't get any benefit, anything of that. But I do recall that that was an alternative that we ran, and working with Ricky, we were there and we just, because he mentioned the same thing, this area, if you were to dredge it, and that's why we tried that one. But we did not see significant lowerings in that area.
Okay.
With the dredging.
You remember last, the distance they said that needed to... It's not long, I mean, it's not from here to that wall over there, but I mean, it's
Yeah. I would assume that Ricky brought that information back to us, because we were working closely with him.
Okay. Now, thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to beat this issue, but that was the reason I asked the question for what Mr. Foreman just brought up. Once y'all got to that point with the environmental concerns, y'all stopped.
Yes.
But the original scope of work was for all of these areas to be completely studied all the way through, including cost analysis. And I have a little trouble with it, y'all would have to come back and ask for more funding when thirty percent of the work was just stopped.
Well, it was stopped, but...
It didn't even, it didn't even complete what was supposed to have been done, so...
But once we hit that wall, we, we could not, we could not recommend a project. So at that point, we did stop.
That reduced the cost of this project.
Well, there's been...
Of the project that y'all were assigned to do.
Yes, and I won't lie to you, our costs have increased on this. We've gone over what we thought was a two million dollar study. We're now at a two point three million dollar study. This is for a number of factors. We have had some scope creep with the extensions on the laterals that we're looking at, and with Katrina, rising costs, we are looking at that.
Mr. Hassan, we have another member from the Corps here. I think you may be able to address something. You look like, do you want to come to the microphone and speak on that behalf? State your name and address.
My name is Darrell Broussard, and I'm the senior project manager for this job. As Nick said, that's not the sole piece that would overrun this study, just to go back and look at that. There's been a whole bunch of things that's taken place over time since this study has started. We've probably done a few more hydraulic model runs than we initially thought we would have. The thing is with the HTRW, we have regulations that would require, before we can recommend any project with HTRW concerns, the locals would have to clean it up. And so when that happens, when we encounter that, we typically stop studying it and spending any money on it, because we can't recommend anything for it. But it's not the sole piece of why the study would have run over. In this particular case, we are butting up against the cost agreement, and to do something now would be in addition to it.
You have the floor, Mr. Hassan. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
On the, all this dredging, digging, widening, culverts, does that take into consideration surge? Like, you're making them wider and faster leaving, does that make it wider and faster coming in? Is that part of this study?
That was not part of the study.
So, all right. My second question, Mr. McMurray, or I'll start with Mr. Smart. Along this black bayou, hippolyte, how many structures are we talking in that area? Do you know, guess?
No, we would like to look at their recommendations, but I think you said four, it might have been three, but...
The removal, or are you talking about actual houses?
I'm talking about the houses where we're saving this much money. How many?
I don't have those with me. I can get those for y'all. We've got those back at the office.
We questioned those with him earlier today, because we couldn't understand how he got the great benefits, and they're going back to him, looking at it.
Because my concern, Mr. McMurray, would be five hundred thousand dollars? Are we going to wait until February 2011 to move on something for that amount of money, for that kind of cost, to wait on the, you know, the federal government to give us five hundred thousand to help people? That's just a question. I don't know if you want to answer it.
I would just ask you the same question. Do you want to wait that long to do that? I don't think you would.
For that kind of money, I would definitely not want to wait until February 2011 to move forward on that type of project. It's just an opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion? I've got, hang on. Mr. Foreman, then we'll come back to you, Mr. Hassan.
I guess there's a couple of things that hit me in the head with this. We just spent two point three million dollars to get five hundred thousand dollars worth of cost benefit out of it. I'd also like to know if the fact that this has taken four and a half years to accomplish has been any part of that significant cost increase that y'all have seen? Because this is four and a half years we're into this study, that I don't know how much work's been done on it and rework and over and over and starting and stopping, and that all factors into the cost of it. And we're having to suffer for the dragging of it. It's taken this long, and we've had to pay the price, and now we're not going to get the whole package of what we entered into an agreement about. So that concerns me.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Just a second, Mr. McMurray, then I'll come back to you just a moment.
Nick, first of all, what is HTRW, or whatever that is?
Hazardous toxic radioactive waste.
Okay. Who develops that? I've asked Claude, I've asked Alan Wainwright. It is a surprise to us that Shoe Peak Bayou has that kind of contamination. I mean, we've had EPA and DEQ in here for the last several years, looking at the whole estuary system, and we have not had that, had Shoe Peak on the radar screen as far as a, you know, that kind of significant contamination, so...
That's our environmental team went out there and found those in that particular stream. We can get y'all their documentation for it.
Well, I just, that was, that was one thing that was extremely surprising about this.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. President. When did that environmental team come up with that? I mean, this project has been going on for, is it three years now?
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
That was probably about eight months ago, I would say.
Okay. I guess something else that Mr. Scott just brought up is, we, none of this study takes into account surge.
Correct.
So we dredge, and the possibility of what that could do is not being factored in at all?
No, sir. We're strictly looking at the drainage in the area. We are not considering surge for this study.
I would think that that would have to be a factor that we would have to consider. We'd just create another problem. I think it's the general opinion of most of us up here that, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I don't know what we just spent this money on. I have nothing else, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Mr. Sims, if you would, just kind of move to the side. We have a speaker from the audience that would like to come speak on this. Bruce Slip, Mr. Atherton. You know the routine.
122 Vine.
Charlie Atherton, 122 Vine Street. Nick, maybe, just for clarification, Nick, maybe we can help the jury better understand some of the, what you may, answer a few questions that may help us better understand about Bayou Den, because Bayou Den is a long, ongoing, festering concern that affects an awful lot of people. I guess my first question would be, if a stream has ever had a history of contamination and has been capped or remediation of some sort done, does that prohibit you from ever going back and dealing with it?
If you would come to the microphone, because we...
If it was no longer an issue, yes, if you capped it and it was not getting out, then you could go back. If the, there was no longer an issue with HTRW, then yes, you could go.
So the Corps would go back?
We could study it at that point, if it was cleaned up, yes.
I was, I don't know why, I'm like Mark on the Shoe Peak Bayou. I thought whatever problem had existed, I thought that had been addressed, but so that's kind of a surprise. But my concern is about Bayou Den, because it's, part of the concern was to have the Corps look into Bayou Den, was there was remediation plans submitted to address your concerns of the contamination and relative to the flow and all that. Now, I understood you guys did go review the remediation plans of Bayou Den, and those remediation plans by the agencies and by the Bayou Den group, as you appreciate it, once they implement these remediation plans, it's not going to affect the drainage of the bayous, right?
Well, yes, we can't really comment on the actual plan, what the remediation will do, but what they had in there for recommendations, our models show that it would not increase flooding in the area. That's correct.
So, so once these remediation plans, it's, I'm assuming are ongoing at the moment, once they're completed, then you guys will go in and do the dredging or the study and whatever to move forward?
We could, if everything was cleaned up, we could then look at it. If it was no longer an issue.
Right, now, by cleaning it up, they're not, they're not going to clean it up. They're going to cap it in place. And the concern originally was, when they pour the concrete across the bayou and build up the settlement, that in your estimation and your modeling, it was not going to restrict the drainage from the city of sulfur. So it means you had to do some kind of a study, a flow study, to determine that that elevation was going to be low enough. That's correct?
Well, we put, we put those alternatives in our models and saw what it did to the flow in that stream.
Okay, so once they complete this, then you guys are going to come back and either dredge the bay, you're going to study it some more and then do some dredging? Mr. Broussard?
If I can add some clarity to it, if the, if you guys did do the capping, we wouldn't go back and disturb the soil anyway. So anything we would do would have to be with the fix in place without us disturbing the soil underneath it. So the alternatives, the cheapest alternatives that we looked at were the dredging alternatives, a pump station wouldn't be benefited in this area, because I don't think you have the damages there. So there's, you know, we're limited in what alternatives would reduce the stages. So if you capped it, we could look at it, which we did in our hydraulic model, but we don't see any type of improvement that we can do in that area that would be a justified project. I hope that helps some.
All right. I do have, Mr. Smart would like to make a comment.
Yeah, just want to make sure that, because part of the major concern was, once these remediations are put in place, that it's not going to restrict the need to widen and deepen it later. And you have answered that question with your modeling. But once, but once it's, once this is capped and remediated, it's still going to be there, but remediated, you will come back and study it and allow dredging? Or anybody can go in and dredge it out, and you won't be involved in that?
No, sir. We would not go back and study it for dredging if it's capped and the material's still there.
How would they dredge it if you had a concrete cap over?
Well, that...
I mean, I don't know how they could dredge it.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to make sure that you, that your position is that, let's just say you studied it later and it said it needed to be wider and deeper, but it's blocked with this concrete cap, and you've already preevaluated that and said that that's not going to be necessary, it wouldn't be a solution.
Well, we looked at it, and with that in place, it did not increase flooding in the area.
Okay. But I think it's important for the jurors in that area to understand that you did do some work and you did do some evaluation. I think maybe it's a play on words, you know?
Okay. What we did evaluate was, if you put a two-foot cap there, would it induce flooding somewhere else? And I think what we showed from the model was, the two-foot cap would not induce flooding. That's the extent of our...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Mr. Smart?
This is a, you know, glad this study's getting over with. We are, this is study, there's this good, bad, and story shifting paradigms. We're going to have to figure out a new way in this parish to combat flooding, and it looks like, you know, the old way is basically that people build where they want, and when they start flooding, then, you know, we go try to help them. We need to kind of be a little more selective about where they're building, and these models that they are coming up with, kind of, and the other consultants, kind of help select those areas and try to keep people out of them or else build up high enough. The good thing is, you know, we've worked with the Corps and the drainage boards, and you're about to with the study, and we haven't got the projects we wanted when we dreamed all this up, and we started on it, but, you know, we certainly are going to have a bond issue on drainage projects anytime soon, but, you know, we've learned a lot, and hopefully, you know, when we get them all finished, we'll have a master drainage plan where we can help go forward. On the bad side, it's a little disturbing, Nick, and Nick wasn't here to start with, but when we sat here and negotiated all this, and we got the drainage board to participate, we told the Corps, you know, that two of these places, Bayou Den and Shoe Peak, had environmental problems, and that's the reason we wanted the Corps to study them, because we couldn't, you know, do them on our own. Now to be told at the end, they got environmental problems, y'all not going to go forward with it, it's just kind of, you know, I know, the work for drainage board would never come in for sure if they hadn't been told that early on. And, you know, back in eighty-nine, when we tried to dredge Shoe Peak, it was turns coming in and out, and I've never heard of these chemicals men in the Shoe Peak either. It's always a nesting bird issue. But, you know, I know you weren't here, and maybe the rules changed since we started, but, you know, we bought all that out in an open meeting and discussed it, and, you know, these are major streams that the drainage boards don't have control over or maintain, so that's the reason we wanted federal help. But, you know, overall, we overlearned, we went on, and hopefully we can use it going forward with our development and, you know, make use of these models. So, no, since we don't have, we got more good out of it than a five hundred thousand dollar project, and we would like to look at that project, Mr. Scott, and give it to the drainage board, have them evaluate it, and come back with a recommendation on it.
Thank you, Mr. Smart. Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just sitting here, just jotting a few things down and kind of listening to a little bit of what Mark said. Out of all the years, Nick, that we had had studies done on these two bayous and everything, it never had anything come up for us for any type of pollution or any type of chemicals or the name that you used. I can't...
The mercury, dioxin, and...
That, that was something that your team actually saw was actually in that bayou?
Yes, their investigations found those things.
Okay, okay. And what...
Like I told Mark, we will get y'all that and let y'all review it.
What, what actually created that type of substance or, what would that come from?
Industry, I could, yeah, I could not tell you that. I'm really not sure about that.
Shoe Peak?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't think anything, I guess that's neither here nor there, but that's what I was concerned at. Out of all the studies that have ever been done in that bayou, we've never had any come before us with that type of sediment in it. So I guess, you know, that's my question, Nick, and you may not be the guy to answer that, but we were just concerned...
I'll definitely get, yes, we'll get y'all...
Because there's been a number of studies done on both of those, and surprising to all of us to hear what that sediment was that was in there. That's all I... That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. Mr. Spell?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the risk of sounding like I'm saying hurry up and wait, and Mr. McMurray, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of these studies parish-wide are culminating to a point to where we're trying to initiate a parish-wide drainage improvement program, which I appreciate Mr. Smart's realistic attitude. However, it would be my hope that we will be embarking on that before 2011 or 2012. So my only concern is, is that, you know, we have a lot of people in this parish who are dealing with flooding issues, and I'm not sure if they can wait two or three years before we address it as a governing body. So just a comment, Mr. President, I, I would hope that we're gonna reach this point to where we can address a parish-wide drainage improvement plan sooner than later, and I hope that we have more discussions about that in the near future to get that up and running as soon as possible to give people in the parish relief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Is there any other jurors that would like to discuss any further on this item? I need a motion, receive report.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Annapod, and second by Mr. Landry, receive report. Thank you for your time, we appreciate your report. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Any discussion, any objection hearing none, that motion carries. Item nine, receive an update from Mr. Randy Vincent, Director of Office of Community Services, on the Naco prescription drug discount card. Mr. Vincent naming, naming, I guess, office.
Randy Vincent, Office of Community Services. Mr. President and jurors, with action from this jury on September 3rd, we launched the Naco prescription drug discard card program. I'm very, very pleased to advise you that we have had great success with the program. Our first month of operation was in September. It wasn't a complete month, because we launched on the 3rd. Took us a couple of days for our citizens to get excited about it and get out there and get the cards, but we still had some very outstanding numbers. Before I give you the, the numbers, I'll say this. Out of all of the parishes, which there are 12 other parishes in the state of Louisiana that participate in the program, Cackasue Parish had the most prescriptions purchased with the, by use of the card and the most citizens utilizing the card. To, to that end, I will advise you that there were 1,589 citizens who actually went out to a pharmacy and attempted to utilize the card. There were roughly 2,300 prescriptions that were quote-unquote adjudicated, to use the terminology used by Naco, and that meant that there were 2,300 prescriptions, some of our citizens having more than one prescription that they were dealing with using the card. So there were 2,300 prescriptions that were considered by that, by the 1,500 citizens. In the final analysis, 1,213 citizens actually made a purchase of their prescriptions by use of the, the discount card. With an annual, I mean with a savings average of 23.73%, which is outstanding, Naco pretty much advised us that we could expect a 22% savings. We ended up in this parish with a 23.73% savings per prescription. That comes out to roughly $11 saved on each prescription, and again, some citizens have more than one prescription. Now, the numbers are, sound great, and, and they are great compared to the, the average performance of most parishes and counties around the country. But I, I do want to remind not only this jury, but our citizens that the card is not meant for every citizen, it's not meant to be utilized in every situation that, where a citizen needs a prescription, but each citizen can present that card each time they go to a pharmacy for the simple reason that pharmacies have their own discount programs or of some sort, be they retail, national retail chains or independent pharmacies, and whenever a citizen goes to make a purchase of a prescription, the pharmacies will be responsible to make certain that our citizens receive the best price on a prescription. That's why we see 2,300 prescriptions being considered and actually 1,500 were, were purchased by use of the card. So, one other point that, that I would like to make is that citizens who have attempted to utilize the card and it didn't work for them on a particular prescription may be in a situation where the particular pharmacy that they attend has a price that is a little bit different from one of the other pharmacies in, in the, in our parish, because all pharmacies have a different price base. But the card is, is valid in most cases for those citizens who are, who are seeking a discount, because the pharmacies will make certain that our citizens receive the best discount that's available for that particular prescription. It's not intended for every situation, but we encourage our, our citizens to utilize the card at every opportunity possible.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Sias?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. When Randy and I was going over this report, I was really elated to find out, you know, after what had happened the first month of this program, and, and we was really excited about the fact, and that knowing that there's still, like you said, a lot of people that still don't know about the program or they don't know how it works. But it just, you know, the thing about it is that it just, it confirmed when they was introduced the program that, that this program was actually fit to these other people of Cackasue Parish, and I'm really proud of that fact. And right now, I'm just looking forward for us to be able to continue to educate the people on the program and to do our best to keep, make it evergreen and continue to sustain.
Thank you, Mr. Sias. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Randy, we know when we talk about drugs and prescriptions and healthcare and whatever, we know pharmaceutical companies, they're, they're in a battle now, a war really, over money. And I'm, I'm very impressed by the numbers. Now, this is not the first time our Office of Community Services had a prescription card. I don't know if it was under your administration, but we've had that before and if the numbers weren't this great. This is my concern. You know, the city has a card, and police jury have a card. We've got people on Medicaid, and those Medicaid individuals, they, they pay very little for their medicine anyway. So my question to you is, using that Medicaid card, because I have constituents who call me medicine 50 cents, all depends on the medication. Now, this card, would it be able to be used with those persons with Medicaid?
No, Ms. Griffin, it will not.
Okay.
Only on those prescriptions where Medicaid may not cover a particular drug, and that holds true for any average citizen who has an insurance program.
And then what happens when the pharmaceutical companies have contracts with the drugstores, whereas the pharmacies, for example, Walmart and Walgreens and probably CVS, they've got medications usually generic with a list where you could get three months' prescription for certain drugs for $10. Would this benefit our citizens using that card? Or would that be the benefit they would receive from that $10? Or would they still get that 23.73% discount?
Well, it's, it's the responsibility of the pharmacies to evaluate the benefits that any particular client has through insurance or any other program. So they take care of that end of it. We are simply there to encourage our car, our citizens to present that card each time they go to the pharmacies, so that they will have an option.
Yes, and I, I'm aware of that. I'm just wanting to know what benefits that they could actually get. And without the card that they're using now from Naco, would that card be able to be used with what they already have from the city? Or can they use only one card?
They can only use one of the cards. And then actually, the pharmacies can look at the, the cards and determine which one-
Which one will give them-
Would give them the best discount, which, in this case, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, they're pretty much the same program, the cities and the parishes.
Okay, so, that, that's real good. I, I know in some cases, for example, for those individuals with Medicare and they have a private insurance, for example, my husband and I, with his Medicare Part A and B, some of his medicine is less than $5. So the card that we're using now, and it's important for our citizens to know that, because I get phone calls from people that's not in my district wanting to know things about, and they need to know those things. So they need to know that that card is good, it's gonna help them and be very, very, very helpful, but it's not going, it doesn't have a magic wand. And so it could only be used when the pharmacies go through and find out what insurance, social government program, Medicaid, Medicare, which one would be best for that. And by the way, it, it concerns me that the Medicare insurance pays 80% on all of the insurances that we have, and, and private insurance companies, they pay 20% of what's left over from the 80%. So this thing, it's not as pretty as it seems, but it's available, and I do hope they use it, and I thank you for your work. But I just want the people to know, this is not the first card that we've had. We've had cards before from Office of Community Services, and, you know, the city have one, so they need to be careful and don't think that they could use all those cards together, because it can't be done.
And most of the pharmacies are educated enough to decipher through and let them know.
The pharmacies are, but the citizens are not. So that's good, and, and it's things like this that'll help them. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Ms. Griffin, Mr. uh, Mr. Guidry?
Mr. Griffin?
Stop no trouble here tonight.
Wow.
Hey, we're, we've been two hours in this meeting, we're on item nine.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vincent, I, I think that you're doing a great job with this card, and I hope that all of our citizens here throughout Cackasue Parish getting the best benefit they possibly can out of this card. My question is, Mr. Vincent, has there been any resistance to a number of the pharmacies here locally that may, in some way, have rejected this card to a degree to where maybe, because of the contracts they have, that it can't be used at that pharmacy? Have you ran into that problem?
I think we had one independent pharmacist that decided, or he opted out, and I can't even recall if he was even a part of the CVS network to begin with, but each pharmacist advised us that they would participate except for that one.
And I know that our senior citizens, you know, they, they need the very best in whatever they can get for us for help with this and everything. Is there anything at this point in time with this program that you see maybe we as a jury could possibly help you somewhat more in?
Well, I, I think having this discussion tonight helps, because it's out there again in front of our citizens. I think the program will grow. The last comment I desired to make was that it saved our citizens $24,000 in the month of September without having a complete month. So I think over time, those numbers will, will, will get better, but, but I think it's definitely showing that it is a viable program for our parish.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sias?
Yes, sir, thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Griffin, I was just wanting to say that when, when I brought the program, you know, forward to the jury, it, what attracted me about it was, it wasn't that I was going after, I, I knew that there were people on Medicaid, and there were people on Medicare, there was people's insurance who had, who had, they was getting benefits. What attracted me about the program was that it addressed the uninsured and the uninsured. So that was strictly what we were looking at and what I was looking at. So it wasn't that we was trying to top off another thing, but it was just because of, there were a group of people that was left out, that wasn't, that wasn't being touched, and they were the uninsured and the underinsured. And so that's what, that's what attracted me about the program, that's, that was the reason why.
Thank you, Mr. Sias. Ms. Griffin?
Mr., that's why I support the program, but we have misinformed taxpayers who need to know what they can and cannot do. Even those that's not insured, that's where Medicaid come in, and they need to know that. So it's a good program, but education could solve a multitude of unnecessary problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to receive report?
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sias, second by Dr. Mackey to receive the report. Any further discussion, any objection? Thank you, Mr. Vincent, for your report. Item 10, plate appropriate action applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Vickers?
Mr. President, we have seven pages of liquor and beer renewals, and we recommend they all be approved.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Guidry on item 10. Any discussion, any objection? Hearing none, item 10 carries. Item 11, consideration approval payment of all current invoices. Got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Dr. Mackey on item 11. Any discussion, any objection? Hearing none, item 11 carries. Item 12, consideration approval of the minutes of the regular meeting-
Item 12?
Second.
The police jury dated on October 1st, 2009. I got a motion by- Mr. Scott, second by Ms. Griffin. We do have a speaker on item 12. Mr. Atherton?
Thank you for your time. Charlie Atherton, 122 Vine Street. Just a, a comment of what, what we don't see in the minutes. And it, it occurs to us that with technically three meetings left of the jury to, to find a replacement for our retired parish administrator, we would have thought by now, we would have seen a, a, an open, transparent process in place by which this selection's gonna be made. So that's my comment. I just, we thought, I had mentioned this to you when this jury first took office, you know, that this was gonna happen, and that hopefully we would have, you know, an open, transparent process by which, what's the plan? You know, I mean, what's the process, the plan by which this selection's gonna be made? And that's the question.
Thank you. We, you said three meetings in this year, but actually, I think his retirement date's gonna be in April of next year. So we have three months.
Yeah, but technically, it's at the end of the year, and if you do an extension, that's an addition. We would have hoped somebody would have been on board, and there would have been like a training program, you know, that sort of thing.
Right, and I think what this jury is looking at doing, we have an executive committee that's gonna be meeting on this behalf, making some recommendations to the jury. I think also there's gonna be probably some discussion amongst this jury, exactly what we're gonna do. We have a, we have been putting a plan together, myself as president, along with the administrator, to inform this jury on that behalf. Mr. Annapod?
Who's on the committee?
I'd have to look. It's a liaison committee.
Were you talking about administration liaison group?
Yes.
I guess it's a matter of interpretation, Mr. President, but I, I don't, I don't see that as- Being the people that should decide that, I'm, I'm just gonna lay it on the line. I don't, I don't always agree with, with you, but- I think we need to have some kind of an open, public process by which we're going to select the next parish administrator. And I'd like to see us discuss this at the next meeting, which is the 19th of this month, and I'm putting that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Annapod, and second by Mr. Landry to discuss openly about the replacement-
And if I could qualify that, the reason I'm saying that is we have one person that we hire, and that is the parish administrator. And I think we owe it, and it's not about personalities, it's not about staff, it's not about anything else other than looking at what we can do as a body that have been elected by the people of Cackasue Parish to come up with the person that is the best qualified for the position. And that's my position, and that is the position of the people that I represent from District 13. And that, that rests my case, but it, I did put that in the form of a motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second, second by Mr. Landry. We do have some discussion. I would agree with you that to find the person of most qualification is absolutely everyone on this jury's responsibility to do that, so I'm sure we all agree upon that. Mr. Who's, who wants to speak? Mr. Scott?
As far as the administration liaison group, just like any other group of liaison members that we have here to, to look into something, I got full confidence in anybody on this jury that's on a group to look into a thing, to come back and give recommendations, and I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. All right, we have a motion second to put on the, what is it, November 19th meeting to discuss-
Yes, sir.
Uh, the hiring or replacement of, of the parish administrator.
A policy in place, basically, is what I'm trying to say, a method of selecting. Do we do it by resume? Do we do it by application? Do we do it by, I don't know that anybody else in it, how many people in this building might want the job, you know?
And I would, I would- And I, and I would, I would take some more comments. Uh, Mr. Hass?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, Mr. Underpont, I think that was the intent of the administration liaison group, was to formulate that and bring that recommendation to the jury on that process, just like the wastewater committee brings to the jury recommendations. It's not a final action by any means, and it was my understanding...
Excuse me, recommend what?
The liaison group hasn't met yet, so I don't, there is no, there is no plan in place.
Well, that's the purpose of my motion.
I'm confused. Hang on just a second, uh...
I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is...
Here's what I would ask, if, if we could.
Yeah.
Points of clarification, a lot of times, we haven't, we haven't virtually been through this in over thirty years. Uh, in speaking to our parish administrator, who often guides us through details like this as we look at that, oh, I would, I would look to him for recommendation to this jury on what, uh, the process may could be that other, uh, juries have done in a similar situation. Mr. McMurray?
It's only been done one time. Um, and there was a committee of the jury that, at the time, I was assistant administrator, and it was a committee of the jury that, uh, sat down and met with me, basically interviewed me, I guess would be the best term. It was, it was in, in, in essence, an interview. Uh, I'd been here twelve years, so they kinda knew, they knew about me, they knew what my resume was, and they interviewed me, and then they, uh, offered me the position at a three-year contract. There's no Supreme Court lifetime appointment to a position like this. I mean, I've, I've functioned here on seven three-year contracts. I never thought I had to quit proving myself. I think that procedure, a succession plan, which I feel like we've had in place here, is the proper way to go. Obviously, that's y'all's call, but the administrative liaison committee is the committee that has, during all that period of time, negotiated my contract and brought back the result of those negotiations to the police jury.
Other discussion? Mr. Hass?
And the point I was trying to make was, this committee would, would make a recommendation on accepting resumes, doing interviews, that, what that process would be. It would, it would be a meeting of, of, of those people on that committee to formulate a plan of action to bring back to the jury. Not a decision to be made, but a plan of action. That would be the first step, that, that was my understanding. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Guidry?
I'm gonna pass on that.
Mr. Landry?
I won't. Uh, maybe I should, I don't know. Uh, and, and the motion is to discuss it on the nineteenth. We seem to be discussing it tonight, but, but...
That's why I pass.
Which, you know, I, I think we need to save it for the nineteenth, but, but when I read the committee assignment, there's no one on there that's the chairman, so who's ever gonna call the meeting?
Yeah, I agree, Chris.
That would be my only question tonight, but we can, and, and it doesn't have to be answered, we can discuss it on the nineteenth.
Ms. Griffin?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to say that, uh, if Mr. Underpont has a motion on the floor, but whether or not this administrative liaison group meet, they only can make a recommendation. That doesn't mean this body have to accept whatever they make, but, uh... And I know that, well, I, it's just, I don't know what procedure, like, like Mark said, it's, it's never happened before, but, uh, it's gonna be interesting. But, but let's just let it be known that, and especially for the public to know, that this administrative liaison group, uh, is just a group that's gonna meet, meet to bring it back here like everything else happens. I, I don't know. However, since it's such a big move that we're making, you know, what Mr. Underpont said, it, it's sound reasoning too, so that's something that we have to, we've never done this before, something we're gonna have to work out.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Underpont?
I'm not trying to override, uh, the liaison committee. It's not a question of, uh, do I mistrust anybody, Mr. Scott? Let's get that understood, that's not the issue here. The issue is plain and simple, that everyone is in this room is gonna have to vote on who the next administrator of this parish is. And all I'm saying is that somewhere along the way, I want some input. Now, if they're gonna recommend something to me, uh, and I don't go along with it, and I don't care how the other fourteen vote, I'm gonna vote my conscience of the conscience of the people of District Thirteen, and the po, and the people who have approached me to make sure that we do a process that benefits a lot of people that, whose names at this time are unknown.
Thank you, Mr. Underpont. I would ask, maybe, on, on that behalf, you would like to, something on the nineteenth, but the possibility of this committee met between the na, between now and the nineteenth, and maybe brought you back a recommendation, would that help with your motion? I mean, is that something that we could discuss also on the floor? Think about that, Mr. Stelly.
Why would we wanna rush to put something together like that? We're not gonna make a final decision. The board was put together, or the group was put together, to come back with recommendations to the board. We have till April. We don't have to do that now. You can voice your opinion at any time, on, on any committee that, that, that you don't like, you know, the recommendation that's made. And in the final, in the end, you're one of fourteen votes, so that's the opportu, I mean, that's, you, you have that, um, right when the time comes. If we meet between now and then, I don't think we're gonna accomplish much. If we could put together, and I think assuming, Mr. Landry, I think assuming that Mr., that Mr. McMillan was gonna be the president, I mean, the chair of that particular committee. I mean, I, that's what I assumed, so, I, I mean, I, I think it's, we've got some time, if we take our time and do it, I think we can come back with the recommendations. If the recommendations are not pleasing, then at that point, whatever recommendation you come up with, then we have the opportunity to vote on that.
Thank you, Ms. Stelly. May I respond? Yes, Mr. Mr. Underpont.
I think there's a mis, misinterpretation to the point that I'm trying to get across. I'm at, I'm in no hurry. If it takes a year, that's fine with me, and if we have an interim between now and the time we appoint somebody else, that's fine with me too. All I'm saying is, and I wasn't aware, were you planning on meeting soon or something?
Yes, sir, we were gonna discuss that.
Okay. All I'm saying is an open discussion beginning the nineteenth of this month, and we go forward from here. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not saying discuss it on the nineteenth and make a final decision, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I didn't realize that you had planned to do that.
Yes, sir.
Miscommunication or whatever it is, doesn't make any difference. The, the issue is that I just wanna be sure that it's open-ended, and that's all I'm saying.
It will be. Everything will be open-ended, and we'll, we'll make sure that this jury, uh, is well-informed. Ms. Griffin?
I, I don't have anything to say. I, I just, in reference to, uh, my colleague from I Way, uh, we do have until, uh, April, but I don't wanna wait until April. I would like for you to call this meeting, uh, with rapidity, 'cause I'm on this liaison committee, and I, I, I don't wanna wait till the last minute.
Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think it would be a good decision for us to do that.
Thank you.
But, but I don't think we need to discuss this anymore tonight.
I agree.
One more discussion, and I'm gonna let Mr. Spell get something in real quick. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just echo Ms. Griffin's comments. Um, I agree with Mr. Stelly, this is not something that we should do with a knee-jerk, but I do understand Mr. Andrew Pont's concern. April third's gonna roll around real quick, and I think we need to get started, and we need to be discussing it, and we need to put a program in place. Do we need to finish it by the nineteenth? I think that's unreasonable, but, uh, time is short, and I think April will be here quicker than we know it, so, uh, I would agree with my colleague, Ms. Griffin, that we need to get started on this process. Thank you, Mr. President.
I, I think of a consensus, we don't really need a motion if you'd like...
That's right, but, but I did not know that you had planned to meet, okay?
Yes, yep.
I would, I withdraw the motion if the second one will be withdrawn, and we can move on.
Okay, so we have a consensus on that. Mr. Scott?
Just to help, uh, Mr. Underpont, I wouldn't think you don't trust the people here, it just sounded like you didn't have the confidence that you weren't gonna get your opinion in on this, and so I apologize if you think I said that, but, you know, this is what we're here for, so I appreciate it.
I accept your apology, and it was not meant that way.
Thank you.
Wow, y'all apologized to me for something.
Thank you. Real quickly, thank you, Mr. Atherton.
It was my concern that technically, the administrator retires at the end of the year, to get to April is gonna take a separate action, was my understanding.
We will take that action.
And that hadn't happened yet.
We, we'll take that action prior to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for...
And thank you for bringing that up.
Putting together a plan, thank you.
Just, Mr. President, in the near future, I would just ask this, if possible, if we're gonna discuss something like this, which can be of a sensitive matter sometimes to a lot of us, and to the public that's watching, I mean, I, I can't talk for Mr. Bean, but if I was gonna be the guy that was looking to replace or be the next parish administrator, I don't think that we should be commenting on these issues with him being here, because just out of respect, I just think that's something that should be done in a closed form, if possible, because that's a sensitive matter to him as a person. And I would ask that, in the near future, if this would come up, that we wouldn't do this in this type form, until we're gonna vote on it, if possible.
I'm pretty sure it'll be done in open form.
I'm pretty sure it would be, but just for the mere fact that, you know, this is something I don't think we should be really getting into right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hass.
Just to echo what, uh, Mr. Guidry just said, that's the point of the liaison group, is to formulate a plan, so we have, so we come into an open meeting with, with some options, not just throwing things out that we have no, no direction. So that, that'll be the plan of the, of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will be setting that meeting. All right, Mr. Landry?
I got just a suggestion before you move on.
You're right ahead.
You could go ahead and apologize to Ms. Griffin for saying "Mr. Griffin," 'cause she did want some type of apology.
Because you did call me Mr. Griffin.
I did call you Mr. Griffin.
That's right, and I'm the same time my husband too.
He called me Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, thank you very much. Everybody's good tonight, and we're gonna make sure that item twelve has now been discussed. Any other discussion? Any objection on item twelve? Item twelve carries item thirteen.
We're on thirteen.
Consideration approving the agenda committee report dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand nine. I got a motion by Mr. Sias, I got a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item thirteen carries item fourteen.
Move on fourteen, all bullets.
Second.
Of the Public Works Committee dated October twenty-ninth, and all bullets. Uh, fourteen-one was to discuss and recommend adopting resolution requesting additional funding from state and supporting measures to get rid of the waterways of Salvania. Fourteen-two was recommended that the ordinance be adopted, existing ordinance amending and canceling thirty-five mile speed limit to establish a twenty-five mile speed limit on Sarah Street located Ward four. Fourteen-three, recommendation of resolution be adopted, urging the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee to continue to re-authorize the federal highway transit program with continuance of funding of federal off-system bridge programs. Fourteen-four advised Cackasue Parish was found in full compliance by Louisiana Department of Transportation Development two thousand nine annual review, which would assure the parish's continuation and participation of the federal bridge replacement program through October two thousand ten. I had a motion by Mr. Foreman, and second by Ms. Griffin on all bullets, so fourteen. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. For, Mr. Spell?
Just real quick, Mr. President, I know this is, uh, developed into a occurrence of, uh, common occurrence, but, um, on the compliance with the LDOTD for the annual review, I just wanna say thank you to Claude and Tim and the engineering staff. I mean, it's, uh, this is something that happens on a frequent basis, and I just wanna tell them guys, good job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Spell. Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Fourteen, all bullets carry. Item fifteen, consideration approving the recommendation director of the vision of planning and development in reference to surplus adjudicated property conducted on October twenty-seventh, two thousand nine. I got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Brain. On fifteen, all bullets. Fifteen-one is sixteen-ten Brick Street, uh, recommendation amount of twenty-five hundred dollars by Mr. Arnold Carey Baptiste. Fifteen-two, twelve-twelve East Church Street, uh, highest offer amount of three thousand dollars by Ms. Sabrina Renee Price, be accepted. Fifteen-three, twenty-eight hundred block of Mary Street, uh, highest offer recommended on seventeen hundred dollars by Mr. Craig Evans. Fifteen-four, Bank Street vacant lot, no bids received. Fifteen-five, uh, was Jake Street vacant lot, highest offer an amount of fourteen hundred dollars by Mr. Craig Evans. Fifteen-six, Sally Bay Street vacant lot, recommendation of twenty-four hundred dollars by Mr. Craig Evans. Uh, fifteen-seven, northwest corner of Martha and Pear Street vacant lot, amount of eighteen hundred dollars by Mr. Craig Evans, accepted. Uh, fifteen-eight, uh, corner of Carter and Mill Street, no bids were received. Fifteen-nine, two hundred block of Grogan Lane vacant lot, uh, recommendation of thirty-seven hundred dollars by Mr. Louis Carter, Keith Louis Carter. Uh, fifteen-ten, sixteen hundred block of North Adams Street, thirty-five hundred dollars by Northside Baptist Church, accepted. Fifteen-eleven, highest offer, fifty-eleven is, is, uh, three-twenty-three Legay Street, Legay Road, highest offer of seventeen hundred dollars by Mr. Charles Jason Abshire to be Uh, fifteen-twelve is sixty-three oh eight Lofton, highest bid of nineteen thousand dollars by Mr. Jerry Michael Bachelor to be accepted. Uh, fifteen-thirteen, twenty-two hundred twelve Lily Street, highest offer of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars by Mr. Herbert Wayne Albert, be accepted. I got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Brain, on item fifteen, all bullets. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item fifteen, all bullets carry. Item sixteen...
We're on all bullets.
Second.
Item sixteen is sixteen-one through sixteen-twelve is consideration amending ordinance in reference to the followed surplus adjudicated properties to extend for deadline for completion and sale of said properties. Uh, I've got a motion by Mr. Landry and second by Ms. Griffin. On sixty-one, I'm not gonna read all of those into the bullets because we're merely extending a deadline, so any discussion on sixteen and all bullets? Any objection? Hearing none. Item sixteen, all bullets carry. Item seventeen, consideration adopting ordinance, rescinding ordinance number fifty-five-ten, which allowed Mr. Stephen Louis Griffith to purchase the following described property. Jenna note, this property has been redeemed, so I need a motion on...
We'll move.
Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Dr. Mackey on item seventeen. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item seventeen carries. Item eighteen, consideration adopting ordinance, amending chapter twenty-three subdivision of the code of ordinance of the Cackasue Parish relative to appendix A of the interim development ordinance in order to assure the consistency in the number of lots. Got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Spell on item eighteen. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item eighteen carries. Item nineteen, consideration adopting resolution approving renewal, cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the district attorney, Cackasue Parish Sheriff's Office, City of Lake Charles, City of Westlake, City of Sulfur, Town of Vinson, City of Dequincy, Allen Parish, police juror Cameron Parish, district attorney's office, region five office of public health, Cackasue Parish, Cows, Cackasue Cameron Hospital Service District, uh, Krista St. Patrick Hospital, Women's and Children's Hospital in reference to continual funding of the Southwest Louisiana Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner of the same program for a period of three years. I got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Dr., uh, by Mr. Scott. Any discussion on item nineteen? Any objection? Hearing none. Item nineteen carries. Item twenty...
Move on twenty.
Consider adopting resolution approving cooperative endeavor agreement between police jury and the City of Lake Charles and the Cackasue Parish School Board with reference to transfer of ownership of Weaver Park property from the police jury at the City of Lake Charles.[1695.00] I got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Bream on item 20. Any discussion? Ms. Griffin.
Somebody explain a little more about this and why are we doing this, transferring this ownership to the city?
Because we haven't had anything to do with this property for years. The city's been operating a city park there. I think the city and the parish both thought that we had actually made a transfer of that property to the city. We had not. City wants to now enter an agreement with the school board to do a property swap. They can't, the city can't give up parish property, so we need to transfer that property to the city so they have the ability to make the transfer with the school board.
Where is it, is that, Mark?
It's across the street from Barb High School.
Oh, okay. And they're going to take over it, take the park over? Well, as you stated, we hadn't had nothing to do with it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Any other discussion? Any objection? Any other discussion? Hearing done. Item 20 carries. Item 21, consideration adopting resolution relative appointment of Emergency Management Advisory Committee and ordinance with provisions of Act Number 524 of the 2009 regular session of the state legislature as follows. Bullet 1, members of the existing executive policy group, which consists of the police jury president, the mayors, and six municipalities, and the sheriff. Bullet 2, parish OHS EP director, the parish administrator. Next bullet 1, representative from fire chiefs of the parish. Next bullet 1, representative of police chiefs of the parish. Next bullet 1, representative of the West Cal Cameron Hospital EMS department. I have a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Scott. Mr. Hassan.
The EMS department, that didn't have anything to do with the ambulances?
It did, but they still have.
They still have.
They still have EMS folks there, yeah. And the law says you have to have a representative of an EMS operation on the advisory committee.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 21 carries. Item 22, take appropriate action on the expiration of term. Mr. Alvin Simmons is member of Board of Commissioners, Water District, Number 2 of Ward 4. Agenda committee recommends Ms. Simmons be reappointed. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Dr. Mackey on item 22. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. 22 carries. 23, take appropriate action on the expiration term. Mr. Edwin Peterson, member of Board of Commissioners, Water District, Number 7 of Wards 4 and 6. Recommended reappointment by Ms. Trimmie, second by Mr. Seis. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 23 carries. Item 24, take appropriate action reference expiration term. Mr. Jimmy Ballard is a member of the Board of Commissioners of Vinton Harbor Terminal. Mr. Ballard, Ms. Martha McLendon have been submitted for consideration.
Move on 24.
I got a motion by Mr. Hassan, second by Mr. Stelly on item 24. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. 24 carries. Item 25, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent on October 22 for mosquito control chemicals, mosquito control solvents. I need a motion on item 25. Got a motion by Ms. Seis, a second by Mr. Landry.
Yes, sir.
On item 25. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 25 carries. Item 26, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent on October 29 for concrete pipe unit price. Got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Bream on item 26. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 26 carries. Item 27.
Second.
Consideration, item 27, I have a motion by Dr. Mackey, second by Mr. Landry, consideration approving request by Louisiana Office of Community Development Hazard Mitigation Program for temporary use of office space on the second floor Magnolia Building and further authorizing an agreement between said agencies and police jury for use of said office space. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. 27 carries. Do you have some emergency items? I need a.
Move to suspend and adopt.
Motion to suspend and adopt for item 1. Item 1 is consideration of adopting resolution ratifying execution of local government proclamation of state emergency by the president of police jury on October 30 proclaiming state of emergency to exist in the parish due to recent heavy rains, potential flooding, and potential property damage due to recent weather systems. I got a motion to suspend and adopt. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on suspending item 1 to suspend and adopt this motion? A motion, second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Trimmie.
I'd just like to ask Dick if he would come up.
Wait, this is just the motion to.
Well, that's what I was waiting on.
Okay. I need 100% vote on that.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Now I move.
Any objection? Now. Now, to move on item 1.
Yeah, I move on item 1.
I got a motion by Ms. Trimmie to move on item 1, second by Mr. Bream, and that was item 1 that I just read. And discussion? Go ahead.
I was informed this afternoon by Dick and also by Alan Wayne Wright that they have been to the Starks area near the Sabine River, and I'd like for you to just give a report on that, Dick, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. We are having a major flood on the Sabine River. In the Starks area, the crest should be over the weekend. It's going to crest at 28 feet, which is about four feet above flood stage. Right now, Alan, I think they closed Alligator Park today. The road has some water over it, and there'll be numerous roads in the area that will be having water over the weekend. We've been doing our ring down to about 275 households out there all week, warning them of this impending flood, and we think most of the people who live in that area are aware of it. One concern has brought to my attention today, we met with some officials from Texas, and I talked to the Texas Parks and Wildlife agents that were there. They've already made two rescues over on the Sabine River today, and I know Louisiana Wildlife and Fisheries has rescued at least one person. The current is very dangerous out there right now, and it is hunting season. We ask people to stay off of that river if you can because it's a very dangerous situation in the small boats that people use here, so. And if they do venture out, certainly use your flotation devices and your kill switches. One other item related to this is we do have a place on our website where people can report their damages, and Pam Mattingly, who's our floodplain manager, would certainly like to get information about this flood so we can use in future references. So if anyone has any questions about that, they can either call our office or the police jury office here.
Ms. Trimmie.
There was one other thing that we discussed, and I guess I lost it. My computer just went dead, right here. It does not compute. But I thought it was important, and I can't remember exactly what it was. Oh, I know what it was. Explain to them and to the people of Calquashew Parish why the water is rising and what they did north of us to cause this flooding.
The Toledo Bend reservoir is not a flood control reservoir. If it gets to a certain level, I think it's 174 feet, they have to start releasing water, and that's what's happened. They've had all of the gates open to what they call six feet. This flood is about a flood of record. It's about as high as it gets from a flood stage standpoint, and it comes up very quickly. So this has all happened within a period of three to four days. So that is the reason, and it's due to all the rains that have happened up in the North Texas area.
Originally, the Toledo Bend reservoir only opened three gates to a three-foot level, and we were hoping that they would do this slowly so that the water would get out but not be, you know, just almost like a wave of water coming out of the Gulf is what this is. Now they have opened all 11 gates up to six feet, the maximum, and they're letting all that water down on Bull Guard and on Calquashew Parish, down the Sabine River. And I just want the people of our area to know that this isn't something that Calquashew Parish has any control over. And I do think that it would be a good idea to maybe pass a resolution of some sort or get some advice. Alan, I see that you're, I'll shut up and you can.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Thank you so much. Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to add that I've represented the Sabine River Authority for a number of years, and I want the people to know that they have a gate-opening procedure that was drawn up by Brown and Root many years ago so that they have absolute strictures on which gates are open and how much they open according to what the pool level is in the lake. It's not an arbitrary thing. I just want people to know that. When they reach certain levels, they have a manual this thick on the gate-opening procedure, and they must follow it, and they do so. I just want to let people know that they're not being arbitrary about, you know, putting all this water down.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie.
You just messed up my point.
Thank you. One question I'd like to add on to the back of yours is, any idea when Toledo Bend will be down low enough, they can start shutting gates?
They've already started shutting gates. The crest is just now passing the Bondwehr area up by Maryville, and it should be to the Starks area, the Starks-Deweyville area by Saturday or Sunday, and then it's expected to go down after that. There will be also some minor flooding issues down in the Stewart Road area by the Scales and Old Highway 90 area as well, but not as much as we have up by Starks.
Thank you, Mr. Spell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to build on Mr. Grimaldi's point about reporting incidences of flooding and the work that Pam's doing, Jimmy, could you please just share with everyone how important it is for people regardless of where they're at in the parish to report flooding and the effect that that has on grant applications and mitigation efforts and things of that nature? Could you comment and share that information briefly, please?
Well, the documentation is absolutely essential, particularly, you know, if you have flood insurance or if you don't have flood insurance. It's, every time we have one of these events, we try to get our people out, you know, for the ones that don't sign up, inevitably, there are going to be some people that are probably not going to register with our website. We'll send our building inspectors out and everything and do damage assessments. Those types of things are then basically given to GOSEP, they're given to FEMA, and, you know, I think that it's, over the years, we've been able to document some things, and that's obviously contributed toward us getting a lot of hazard mitigation grants. And so it's very important that we document it, and particularly, you know, if you have a flood insurance claim, the number of flooding occurrences and so forth, that all weighs into the monies that we do receive from hazard mitigation. So it's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. So I'd just like to strongly encourage people to report that with Jimmy and his staff because it helps us with supplemental funding on those efforts. And one more quick point, Mr. President. Alan, I know our Public Works crews have been very busy over the last couple of weeks. Just wanted to say thank you and all the Public Works crews for their efforts. I know y'all have been real busy and doing a lot of work out there, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Spell. Mr. Forham.
Do we have any kind of proactive measures in place to go out and maybe double-check our floodplain maps against what we're seeing out there in this event?
Go ahead. Mr. Wayne Wright.
Yes, sir. This is, unfortunately, an ideal event for the modeling that we talked about earlier. These elevations that we'll experience this weekend are actually some of the controlling data that is used to base all that modeling off of where the elevation you start from is also important. Our crews have already been out. We've been surveying all week. Cliff Anacor, I don't know if he's left yet, but the last set of modeling that wraps up the entire parish is the Sabine Basin, so on one, being unfortunate for the citizens, it's going to be real fortunate for the studies, that this is going to be very critical data and very timely.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Forham. Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 1 carries. I need a motion to suspend the rules on item 2. Item 2 reads as, consideration adopting resolution ratifying execution of the president of police jury grant applications totaling $336,623. The governor's office of homeland security funds the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and law enforcement security measures, training, planning, exercises, equipments, self-stable meals, water, basic first aid for first responders. I have a motion by Mr. Forham and a second by Mr. Guidry to suspend the rules. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on suspending the rules on item 2? Any discussion? Hearing done. Item 2. Need a motion to accept.
Move to accept.
A motion by Mr. Landry to accept item 2 as read, second by Mr. Hassan. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 2 carries. I need a motion to suspend.
Move to suspend and adopt.
Second.
Not adopt, just suspend.
Oh, well.
A motion to suspend the rules on, by Mr. Hassan, second by Mr. Guidry. And item 3 is consideration adopting resolution approving fourth amended cooperative agreement between the police jury and state Louisiana facility planning control, which provides for additional grant in amount of $100,000 for Burton Memorial Coliseum complex renovation planning construction, including the arena reconstruction. I've got a motion to suspend the rules on item 3. Is there any discussion to suspend the rules? Anyone in the audience like to discuss spending the rules on item 3? Hearing, no objection. That motion carries. Now, I need a motion.
Move to adopt.
A motion by Mr. Landry to adopt item 3, second by Dr. Mackey. Is there any discussion on the adoption of item 3? Any objection? Hearing done. Item 3 carries. I need a motion to suspend the rules on item 4.
Move to 4. Second.
A motion by Ms. Trimmie, second by Ms. Griffin on item 4 to suspend the rules. Item 4 reads as, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish police jury on October 20 for construction of the Allen-Piagus Multipurpose Center. Staff recommends that the bid of rebate construction corporation be accepted.
Move to accept.
Oh, wait, hang on just a second. I got a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss spending the rules, suspending the rules on item 4? Any objection? On this board? Hearing done. We now have the rules suspended on item 4. I need a motion for item 4. Motion by Dr. Mackey to accept item 4, second by Mr. Landry on the acceptance of item 4. Any discussion? Any objection? Item 4 carries. We have a consideration, item 28, consideration of going into executive session to discuss